But all the proceeds for that.
Okay, we're live and go ahead and ask the clerk to call roll please.
Mayor Grant.
Present.
Mrs. Carham.
Present.
Mr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Pointer.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Roderick.
Present.
Attorney Bars.
Present.
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, Junior Counsel Morgan Wood.
Present.
Lillian Irwin. Jocelyn Barnett. Grace Hiller.
Present.
Almost put next down for you, Kate and Ashley. Addison Hill.
Present.
Good, okay, Mayor.
Okay, does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting?
I just got it. I did have one change. I'd like to, I think one big thing that got left off in minutes was the fact that the city council voted unanimously to recognize the founding of the City of Attica. And that should probably explain into the minutes.
Absolutely.
All right, I will look over, I wasn't in attendance at the last meeting and I honestly didn't do these because I wasn't in attendance at the last meeting.
Well, we were just talking about Mickey was here and probably she's.
I'll just see where at, and do you know where at in the meeting it was? What part of the session?
I think it was early on.
It was probably after Brent, yeah, it is.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's Brent.
Yeah, oh yeah, and that's the thing you need to fix.
Minutes had that wrong too, I didn't point that out, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably why I said it.
All right, I will look for that and I will amend the minutes to include that.
Okay, thank you.
Have motion to approve the minutes pending the changes.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have motion to second all in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, do we have any citizens petitions this evening? Is anybody here to bring something up or complain or say something nice? I don't care.
We should.
Um, I have a question about asking if, um.
What's your, please state your name.
My name is Mason Hanson.
Okay.
And I live around Sixth Street.
Okay.
Um, every year my family has the yard sale to help our kids, um, throw the travel club. And we have grown a little bit and we didn't know if it would be possible if we could block off on Knott Street, um, from the corner of Knott Street to the end of my driveway. Um, there is no other driveway that is being used and my other two neighbors would be able to use Fifth Street to exit. Um, just for overflow of donations that we have gotten.
Have you talked to the other neighbors or would they be open to this?
I have talked to one of them, um, I have not talked to Sally and the people that live in the apartment next to us, the Orks. Um, but I'm sure they probably would not have any problem with that.
I mean, I know we've done this for auctions and things like that before.
Should we get a signature, to get signatures from them or a little write-up that they agree to this during these time periods or whatever? Should we ask her to get that?
I'd be okay with that, I guess, I wouldn't hurt. I mean, I, I think, when, when is this?
It's during the Heritage Days from the next.
Okay, so that's coming up, so could we approve it?
Sunday we would have a.
Pending something in writing?
Yeah, so, and I'd say pending approval by our neighbors and then.
Well, and then the police chief too.
If they just want to bring it in.
Garrett, Garrett should probably be involved in.
Typically Eric's the guy that brings out the, the.
Barricades.
Barricades, yeah.
Okay. And then you just have your neighbor sign it and that way.
Just bring it into the clerk's office.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, go ahead and move forward. Uh, I have the Attica two hundred update, Mr. Bauer Band is here. And give us a short update, that'd be great.
Short update. Um, things are chugging along, we are at, I would say, um, the Lion's Head is, um, uh, with Nathan and Mario and, and all, is crated up, ready, it will go, talking with Eric, looks like we're gonna use Friday as a move day. Okay, to take things like the Lion's Head down to the riverfront and then also the canal lock, okay? So we will have, uh, that as a move day, uh, those are going along, we're probably two, three.
This coming Friday?
What?
This coming Friday?
This coming Friday.
Not this Friday.
Hmm?
Next Friday.
Yeah.
I'd say, yeah.
Friday afternoon.
Wow, yeah, everything moved ahead.
No, 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 this Friday is when they're gonna move the Lion's Head. Move a week ahead.
Oh, an hour?
Yep.
Yeah.
So that it's down there and so, because we still gotta set up water to it, we've gotta set up different things and, and make sure it goes together and all, so getting it down there will allow us to finalize there and, um, and then, let's see, we're pretty much go, the tent is set, ready to be set up, uh, Thursday, you know, um, afternoon from.
Next Thursday afternoon.
That, that is next Thursday, yes, that is not this Thursday. And, uh, yeah, we're, we're pretty much on, on target. Everything is, is going, it's still, uh, it's a, it's a uh, quick, you know, push, but we're trying to get there. Any, any word on banners or anything?
Yeah, I do, uh, so Brandon, what we're gonna do is, uh, I just met Chris Irwin today and so next Monday, Chris is going to be, uh, he'll have, Monday, Tuesday, maybe even earlier. I guess the Badlands have him working pretty hard right now, uh, so he said that he's probably wanna catch a break for a second, but, um, so once they get the ban, banner's been designed and everything and it's gonna go on the front side when you come across the bridge there and it'll, it'll say welcome to Attica, but where it says the place to be, actually the banner will cover that and it will talk about the bicentennial, um, you know, Attica founded, that kind of thing. We're using the, um, the logo that you guys had that you gave to Chris, 'cause I think their Heritage Days is having some shirts made as well, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, so there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a sign going out there and like, like I said, you can start looking for it early next week. And then there will be another sign that goes right across when they come out from McDonald's, it'll be there as well. Um, and then the yard signs, and I talked to Jake about this, uh, I don't know exactly how many we're gonna end up with, but I don't know that they're gonna be here for Heritage Days, we're trying, and there's still possibility, but if not, it's still for the bicentennial. And so he'll have signs to give out at his place, probably there will be some at David's Drugs and, and probably some up here at the, at the.
Yeah. This, this Wednesday is the final, uh, check, checkoff review, uh, try to get much more granular on what all we need to do and that'll be seven o'clock this Wednesday, right here. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did reach out to the police chief today, uh, he's not here this evening, but he will be, uh, he's actually available on phone if we need something from him tonight, but, uh, uh, I reminded him about having security and, and where we're at with that and, uh, of course, the parade and all that availability for police officers, so. Uh, UGA update. And I don't seek him out in the audience, so, no UGA update this evening. I, I understand they did close on the building downtown this last Thursday, um, or Friday, so the old Paris Dry Cleaners now, uh, is owned by UGA. And, uh, they're making plans to demolish that, turn that into a parking area for the business incubator, which is a great thing, uh, to get that out of there. Uh, go ahead and move on to junior council concerns and reports. Uh, I've got a note on here, Grace and Morgan have been working on recruiting new junior council members. I did get three applications this week in the mail, they were damaged when they came, but, uh, I did get them, so thank you for doing that. Uh, and hopefully we'll get a few more as we move forward, but, uh, you guys have any, any junior council members have anything else for the group right now? And feel free to speak up during the meeting, you're available.
Homecoming is September twenty-sixth, we're gonna have a parade through town and I don't know if you guys remember, but it's before COVID, we did like floats and each class decorated them and it was only high school. But this year, middle school's also gonna be doing trucks, so we'll have a whole parade through the town and then we'll come back and have the football game, of course, and they'll do court and all that stuff. But just so you guys know that we'll have a parade through town this year.
Cool.
Right.
Glad to see that fact.
Is there a theme?
Yeah, it's, um, holidays.
Thank you. Anything else, ladies?
No.
Okay. Um, department heads, Mr. Slank.
I don't have anything.
Chief Miller is out of town tonight, but he is available for needing. Chief Little is not here. Mrs. Brownwater, do you have anything for the group?
Um, yeah. Just, we'll get to it later on the agenda, but the budget was advertised on August twenty-eighth for the twenty-twenty-sixth, um, calendar year. Our federal audit is complete and we had our accident review on that last week and those audit findings will be available to the public within the next couple of weeks. And we have a tentative, um, go-live date for our new software, which is July of twenty-twenty-six. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, unfinished business, I can get through some of these really quick. The rental housing inspection part-time position has been filled. Uh, Eric's finally got some help, hopefully that'll work out well and, and that position is gonna start next week, is that right?
Week after.
Week after.
Do we have a name?
Lisa, uh, Eckard, Eckard.
Eckard? With a T or a D?
T.
Okay, unfinished business, cats running at large, and let's see, we've got a delegation from Paws and Claws here this evening. Uh, would you like to kick the, kick off the topic? Would you like us to discuss it and ask questions or I'll kinda throw it in your court right?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm just here for questions, I guess, 'cause I guess last time, um, you guys had some concerns and I wanted to make sure there was somebody here on board that, you know, at least addressed some of that for you. I mean, I don't, uh, I, I, you know, this problem's been going on for quite a while. I know, uh, we've worked on it in the past, we've been trying to do what we can with the trap neuter and release, but this is years and years and years of these cats just reproducing, um, and people feeding them and then not getting them fixed. Um, you know, I don't think it's something that we're gonna be able just to fix overnight. I don't think that's a realistic thought, because it's been going on for so long. I think Jessica was telling me maybe fifty, sixty cats down there, I, I don't know. Um, I know she also said last meeting that, um, we were asked to, to maybe trap these cats and take them to the shelter, um, and we, we don't have the resources to do that either. I'd be hard pressed to find a, an animal control facility that, that would be able to take in fifty feral cats. Um, you know, we, uh, we do what we can and the TNR program is available to citizens in Attica and Fountain County at no charge. Um, and that's what we've done the last couple of years to try to combat the problem. I think we've made a small dent in it, I don't think, obviously we've got a ways to go yet. But it's, um, a free service where they trap the animal, they bring them to Jessica, Jessica then takes them to my clinic. We fix them at no charge, um, to the owner and then clip their ears, we know that they're done, and then we return them back. Um, I think, to me, that would be the most humane and cost-effective way to approach the problem is to maybe become a little bit more aggressive with our TNR program. Um, now, obviously that, that costs money as well, um, but I volunteer my services and I'm sure I could probably find another veterinarian or two in the area that would probably be willing to volunteer services as well. And then I think just taking a little bit by, you know, a little bit at a time, hopefully we'll get the population down. There's a lot of cats in, in town. You know, it's kinda like that, that old adage, you know, how do you eat an elephant, you know, one bite at a time. I, I mean, I don't know how else we can just go in and just get rid of all those cats or just.
Could I ask your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, Tracy Broderick.
Okay.
Um, I'm a veterinarian, uh, down on Rupert Road.
Okay.
Countryside, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Um, and I'm president of Paws and Claws.
Oh, okay.
Founder, who we started about thirteen years ago.
Oh, okay.
We've been serving the, the county and the city for thirteen years and we've made significant, um, improvements, but as I'm sure you guys all know too, there's just no money out there to, to fund those kind of organizations and, uh, we do the best with what we have. Jessica does an outstanding job in trying to keep costs down, um, recruit volunteers. Um, she's done several fundraising events this year that actually has come and it helped our income. Um, because as far as money goes, just to let you guys know, um, since you're, I haven't really talked to any of you, I think except for me, um, you know, we get the contract money from the, the city and the county and then we have to base our entire organization off of that. So that's all of our operating costs, that's our labor, that's our insurance, that's feeding the animals, that's treating the animals. Um, and it, it, it gets real expensive really quick. Um, so having myself and Dr. Um, Heims, Erica Heims, I don't know if y'all know her.
Mm-hmm.
She's on board too, she helps me as well. Um, she'll do the procedures and stuff, you know, on her own time and not charged for those, so she helps out a lot as well. Um, but it's primarily just her and I doing it. Um, and we have no problem doing that. Uh, I just don't know, you know, with the volume that, that you guys are wanting to take care of, like, right now. I don't know how we're gonna be able to absorb that or have the resources to do it all at one time. I think this is gonna have to be a process.
If I could say, I just think we need progress, like, like you're talking about. I mean, we don't expect them to be gone in one day, but as long as there's a process, we know we're, we're cutting them back.
Yeah.
And, and I was gonna ask Judd too, does any of your other cities, do any of them have a problem with cats?
No, uh, they all have like the random, you know, cats or dogs running at large and they may take them to a shelter, uh, that they have some contractual relationship with, but.
But you don't hear a problem like, like we have?
Never discussed in a public, and I'm not saying that it's not something to discuss.
Right.
A public, I'm just saying, it's not risen to the level of we need to do something about, something different.
Okay.
It has risen to that level in the.
I don't know how to hold owners accountable either. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost impossible to do that, you know, but if people.
And I know we're strapped because there's no money anymore.
Right.
And we're doing that, but then how do we get rid of the cats?
We understand that too, we understand that too. Yeah, we, we're operating in red every year and the only reason we make it sweet is because she, she, she makes, uh, makes up for it in all our donations.
Tracy, do you think that, that citizens are fueling the fire, so to speak, by feeding these feral cats?
That's tough.
I know that's a two-edged sword, but, but.
Yeah, they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart.
I know.
And they're trying to help.
But, but.
But, yes.
It seems like that's making the problem bigger.
It propagates them, yeah. I mean, they're more likely to reproduce and make more cats if they're being fed well, absolutely.
Most competition. Just as a side note, I came home last weekend and I had left my garage door open and I went out to put some groceries away in the freezer and there was a litter of cats in my garage.
Oh, God.
Thankfully, they moved out overnight and I don't know where they went, but they're gone.
And most of these cats are feral too, are they not? They're, they're not really approachable.
No, oh no, can't go near them.
Yeah.
So if I might, um, one of the things, I'm, I'm kinda new this year to the council, though I sat in on a meeting last year, I think, when this came up. And, uh, the council, I, and I think that she gave a presentation on how much money she was asking for the budget for the following year. And it was like, uh, really, it was kinda like, you know, which way is wind blowing? And, um, I don't think the council really, uh, responded well to that because it wasn't really tied out. It, it was, it was like what she was asking for, it's like, well, this and then, but there was no really rationale on how the council arrived at the number they did for their funding. And, um, and so it, for me, I would like to really try to work with you guys to figure out, are you getting enough money from the City of Attica or do we need to work with, you know, you know, the administrative operations for the city as well to help you guys? I think we could do a better job, but I, I still don't think that the numbers that we're paying you are tied out. And, and it may be that you need more money from us, I don't know.
I have a problem with giving money when I'm not seeing anything in return currently and that's where I'm, I'm struggling, is there are counties, there are, there are cities that are not giving money and they might actually be more serviced than we are. And we can't tie any animals to, we can say, hey, I went, you know, maybe this week you picked up a couple of animals in Attica, 'cause you know that for this week, but for the year, I can't say, hey, Attica citizens, with the money, money that we paid, we, they, we had to rehome or we, we took in ten cats and eight dogs or, and I know that's an unrealistic number, by the way, but, you know, we can't even tie that to say, hey, our, our money is being used for Attica.
And, and I believe I asked that the last week when she was here, I asked if we could get some data as far as numbers, what we're doing here. We wanna know what the other cities are doing too, 'cause.
Right.
That, you know, if we're paying for another city.
Right.
We shouldn't be doing that either.
Well, you, you shouldn't be, it should just be Attica. Um, let me kinda go back to what, what, what you were saying. Um, with the, every year, we try to give you guys a printout on how many animals we've taken in, where they've gone and what's happened to them and how many runs we've been on, so you should have that information available to you, I'm sorry if, if for some reason you don't.
I wasn't that needy.
Okay.
I don't think we saw.
Um, 'cause usually we'll send that.
We, we saw something, I remember seeing something, but I didn't remember making head or, head or tails of it. It was not definable. Uh, it was, there was information, but it wasn't presented in a way that could be useful to.
Okay, I think how we broke it down was, um, the, the total amount of, of animals that we have from Attica. And we separate that out from the county, 'cause we wanna be fair. And actually, the county and Attica are real similar on numbers. Um, and then Jessica, actually, she has a, and I didn't ask her for an update all the time, we go through this, uh, every quarter. Um, like as of right now, of, uh, September, so a little bit more than halfway through the year. We've, we've taken in forty-four, uh, cats and dogs, twenty-four cats, twenty dogs. We've had eleven surrenders where people have brought them to us, we've been able to take them, eight cats, three dogs. Um, quarantined animals are perceived where Jessica goes out and works with law enforcement and takes animals from a home where the police feel it's, you know, they need to be taken.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a lot of those are in the like cases, um, that she'll follow up with, with, you know, prosecuting those people with. Um, we've had nine of those so far this year, unfortunately. Um, and then we've had twenty-six animals born at the shelter, so animals that come in that are pregnant and then they have their babies at the shelter. So out of all of those, we've adopted out fifty. Um, we've had to euthanize eleven. We have, um, nine still there right now and we've reclaimed, meaning actually got back to the owners, like all those forty-four strays, only five. Only five were reclaimed. We have a lot, we've got a lot of those that just don't ever, we don't ever find out who they belong to. Um, so that was the way we broke it down. Now, if you want something more specific or, I mean, I, I wanna know.
Is there, is there a way we could tie an animal, in, in particular a cat, to a dollar amount?
Oh, a dollar amount, okay.
A dollar amount, yeah. And, and also, not only that, but we, we set up, uh, okay, so we're in January and we're not expecting to catch a lot of animals, so we're gonna have a goal of five cats or, you know, if it's a hundred dollars per cat, five hundred dollars is the budget. Okay, and then we get, and then we're all on the same page, we have a common place, we're thinking from, we're talking from and, and then we can tie that out to dollars. And you guys may find that you're not getting enough money from us.
Well, I can tell you right now we're not.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I can tell you that there's not many, uh, council members gonna give you more until we get this figured out.
I, I understand that too. I, I, I really do. I mean, I get both sides of it, it's just sometimes I think that, um, it, it's, there's so much more to it than just going out and getting a dog off the street. I mean, we have to have insurance. I mean, we had nineteen thousand dollars of the insurance we had to pay this year, because it's a dangerous job.
Well, that's something we can talk about, because maybe our insurance policies might have an umbrella that could cover you to some extent. And it might be a worthwhile conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm interested in having you guys have as much money to make the animals better and make the community better, so if we could, you know, start working a little bit closer on these things, that would be great. I suggested last time, a barcode, you catch a cat or a dog and you barcode it right where your location is, so we know what region in the city it's coming from. And then, you know, then we can zero in and say, hey, we're catching all these cats in this neighborhood, okay? And, uh, we just don't have enough data to work with, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and maybe you may tell us that it's better for us to go put, uh, a, 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 a city-funded feeding place for these cats and, uh, and don't let anybody else feed cats, okay? And, and, you know, I don't know, but there's gotta be a way to work together to get something better.
Well, I think awareness would, would, would be one thing we can start with too. I mean, I know a lot of people know that we have a problem, but I think a lot of those people who think they're doing the right thing by feeding and, and encouraging them to reproduce, um, you know, and they do a lot of education like that too. If we get calls, and they, they get multiple calls, um, and a lot of those are going out and saying, hey, look, this is what you need to do, this is why we're here. Um, and I think just education and kind of informing people that, hey, you're not really helping the problem, you're, you're making it work.
Is that something that we could, like, maybe like, what, sorry, Johnny?
Exactly, I'm like, I'm like with you, right with you.
We could get that information too, and I say that, is that something that we could post on our Facebook page?
Oh, absolutely.
Paws and Claws, like, hey, po- Paws and Claws, this is our suggestions with the city, do not feed the feral cats, it caused, these are the prob, you know, that type of thing?
Right.
I mean, if it comes from me.
Yeah.
I, I'm a heartless, you know, what, but if it comes from you, it, it's, there's some expertise behind that.
Yeah, if we could say like, this was in conjunction together, this is a group effort to say, hey, we have to try to, we have to try to make this better and this is one way to do that. You're actually making it worse by feeding them.
And you're always gonna have those people where be like, oh, that's heartless, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're, well, not what you say.
Right.
They're not gonna change your mind.
I mean, to me, it attracts, it, food is going to attract any animal.
That's true, yeah.
No matter what it is, whether it's raccoons, it doesn't make any difference, yeah.
Yes, exactly, raccoons, crosshens, all of that stuff, yeah. Oh, and I, and I know it's, it's a nuisance.
I always had that problem with the store because vendors, employees, everybody was feeding the cats behind the store. And I'm sure they still are, but at one time you came and got them and fixed them and brought it back.
Yeah.
Which the cats keep the mice away.
Mm-hmm.
But there's so many different people feeding them.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how you.
Doesn't keep the buzzards away either.
No.
Well, so, is there, is it possible that we could kinda, uh, deputize, could we deputize Paws and Claws to give them, um, a little bit more teeth to where they could get into some of the, uh, the, the ordinances that we approve for, uh, fees, uh, to charge, you know, like, uh, write tickets, you know? Could we, could, is there, could we deputize them?
Uh, I, I think that we would need to tighten up our animal control or ordinance to make that happen. You know, and, and I've had multiple discussions about this over the last several months with, with different citizens and, and people and, and, you know, maybe one thing that needs to be done is, and I know people aren't gonna like this, particularly the ladies in the clerk's office, but we may need to go back to a licensing to where your cat or dog is, is licensed and in order to get that license, it has to be spayed or neutered.
Vaccinated.
There's gonna, there's just gonna have to be some teeth to that.
I think that might be what we have to do.
I think that's what we need to do.
And then if it's not licensed, then it's.
Enforcing it though might be the issue, so.
Problem is, if feral ones, nobody's gonna claim them.
It would, well, it would have, if, if it's loose, it would have to have a collar.
Yeah.
A, a cat, dogs and cats are not supposed to run loose to begin with.
Right.
Chicken would be a good idea. But if, if, if you have a cat, at least if it has a collar with a city tag on it, you know that it's been spayed, neutered and, and it belongs to somebody.
Right.
Where if it's just out running around, to me, it's, it doesn't belong to anybody. It, we'll, we'll take comments from the crowd here in just a few minutes, if you don't mind. Uh, one thing that, while, while I'm thinking about it, that, that came up in a, a lot of these conversations is that, that it's been pointed out to me multiple times that the city is paying Paws and Claws a fair amount every year.
Mm-hmm.
The county is paying Paws and Claws a fair amount a year. And the people in Attica are paying not only city taxes, but county taxes.
Mm-hmm.
So a lot of people in Attica believe that they are being double dipped on, so to speak, for Paws and Claws services.
Sure.
Uh, I, I brought up Covington at the last meeting and you said that you'd reached a agreement with Covington. I, I talked to Brad Crane the other day at a meeting and Brad Crane says, we do not have an agreement with them. He says, we are bringing cats on a one or dogs on a one-on-one basis and paying a fee, but we're not cutting Paws and Claws a check like you guys are.
Right.
So I, I don't, I'm not privy to what their, their contract language says, but just so everybody knows, that's not the case. Uh, apparently, they're, they're just paying like on a per diem basis, whatever the, whatever they bring up there. There are areas of the county that are not covered at all by Paws and Claws, is that not correct?
Well, when we first came up with the contracts, I guess, it, there was a distinguished line between incorporated towns and not incorporated towns.
Okay.
And the idea was anybody who was incorporated, who had their own town council, they were kind of in charge of their own community's animal control and how they wanted to handle it, you know, was a priority for them or wasn't a priority for them.
Right.
And then if they were not incorporated, 'cause we have a lot of rural folks, um, those fell under the county. So that's how it's always been, not saying that we, we can change that.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Um, you know, every, every town, this town wants to spend this much, this town wants to spend this much, and then as far as services that we, we give you guys. And then as far as services that we, we give you guys, I mean, there, there is a big difference between what we could do for an incorporated town that we just, you know, pick up a dog every now and then and they give us a hundred and fifty dollars per dog. Versus Attica, you guys just have like a, you know, a contract. So we have to, you know, take in however many that you need. And those animals also though are vetted, spayed and neutered, microchipped, vaccinated, and we adopt them out. So there's all that cost included with that too. So I, I don't know. I mean, I guess we could revisit it, but if you look at our financials, like our profit and loss, our balance sheet, I mean, you'll see that our operating costs.
I get that part, I do, but from where I'm sitting, I'm, I'm hearing people saying that. And in order to be transparent and honest, I have to let you know that people are saying that and I understand where they're coming from, so.
Well, and I, and I don't know the whole logistics of the legal and the, what you guys do as far as, you know, taxes and charging, you know, county per city. I don't know how all that works. I can't imagine though, if you break it down per household, I mean, how much are people paying? I mean, is it, is it two dollars, three dollars? I, I don't know.
But I don't think that they're, but I think because they're getting double dipped right now, we're not seeing the return on it whatsoever. Because we're still having such an out of control problem. And like what you said, it is like one bite at a time and we understand that. But instead of this, like in the last, like maybe five to six years, instead of it being one bite at a time, we're feeding that elephant because it's not gotten any better in the last five or six years.
Well, and I, and I, I don't quite understand what you mean by you're not seeing the return. Is it just for the cats that we're talking about or for the animal control?
I guess right now, I guess I should say for me, I'm seeing, well, I was, I think at the last meeting, and if I'm wrong, please forgive me. So I thought that we, there was also an issue to say, hey, if there's a problem with a cat or whatever and you're full.
When it comes to cats, yes, dogs, no. And that's how the contract's been set up too for a lot of our other counties and.
But that's so, but what, what our current problem is, our current, current problem is cats.
Is cats. Well, I mean, and then if, if we want to shift, you know, okay, where do you want the bulk of the money to go? Do you want it to go to the stray dogs and then we vet them and get them and get them housed and adopted out? Or do you want that money to go more towards controlling the feral cat population? I guess we've always prioritized that as, as a lower priority, not that it wasn't a priority.
Right.
But, you know, most folks, when they want some, when they need help from us, it's usually from, okay, I, I lost my job, I can't keep this dog, can you take it and find a home for it?
Right.
I mean, that is, that's been the primary purpose of, of what we've done.
Well, I was going back, it says on here, you've taken it for the year, you took in forty-four strays. I'm guessing you, that means from Attica.
Just from Attica.
Just from Attica, so twenty-four cats and twenty dogs. I bet that if you had the room, you would have taken in a hundred and four cats.
Oh.
Without a doubt.
More.
And, and I think that's, and I, and I get what you're saying, like, you don't want, you don't want everything to just go towards a cat. By any, I get that, that there are other animals out there. I think the problem, like I said, my hesitation with all of this is we're just continuing to see the same problem and there's not progress with it. And then when we, we have somebody willing to trap a cat, we don't have room, sorry. Like, it's a very, and it's been, it's been like that. I would say there's been a lot of times this year where you guys have been, it's been closed, I say closed, I don't want, that's not the right wording. Yeah, yeah, at capacity, sorry, that's, that's what I meant.
And since COVID, it's kind of been that way.
Yeah.
Crazy, the amount of animals that have gone through there. But yeah, I, I understand what you're saying too. And I, I feel bad that we can't take them all.
You would have a ton of cats.
But we don't, we don't, we just don't have the resources. So we always make sure we have space for like the important animal control stuff too. Like the police go out and they're like, hey, we, we've got an aggressive animal. We got to make sure we have rooms and we can get that animal and we take it. I mean, that's where, you know, we have to take those animals.
Right.
So sometimes they, they fill up all the spots.
So Tracy, if I'm just running quick numbers based on what you've presented to us, I think the contract's thirty-five thousand, is that what it is? So we're at September, so we're seventy-five percent into the year. And if you take twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty and divide it by forty, which is half dogs, half cats, that means that each animal is costing six hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Is, is that a number?
That sounds about right. For, for everything that we're doing, yes.
Okay, so if we've got sixty cats that we've got to get taken care of, times sixty.
I got the very low.
That's a forty thousand dollars. We're in the hole forty thousand dollars right now.
Well, no, not necessarily, because these cats that you're talking about are not pets, okay? These are feral cats.
Okay.
So the cost for the trap, neuter and release is significantly less than the pets that we take in and then treat medically and it gets adopted.
Okay, but, but out of the forty that you just talked about and only twenty cats, how many of those are in the TNR program?
How many of the twenty?
How many of those cats are in that?
None.
Oh, okay. So there's additional cats that you're taking in?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Then what's that number then?
The TNR, I think we did.
I mean, that's a, that's an important number, we need to know that. Yeah, I thought.
We've done about, um, let's see, we've done forty so far this year.
Trap and release.
We've done forty for Attica and we've done.
Trap and release and then twenty more cats on top of that.
That were strays.
That's, that's a significant number.
Yes.
Okay, well, that changes the number.
Yeah, that's, that seems a little.
That's a hundred dollars, now you're a hundred dollars in animals.
Yeah, okay, well, for the TNR, yeah.
Yeah.
For the TNR, I mean.
Well, no, that TNR brings the overall number down to a hundred dollars.
I guess we could, well, we kind of separated it out because I do those at no charge, so, you know?
I agree.
And Purdue does a lot of our other like pets, like she takes animals to Purdue all the time too. So students do them and that saves us a lot of money. We have a great relationship with Purdue and those, that they stay in a new dorm. But yeah, I mean, you do bring up a really good, good point. I guess I never thought, we always kind of treated it separate, but.
We got to figure out how to monetize this, honestly. And I know that there used to be a dog catcher in town, Erica, was that under your, where was, you didn't have the dog catcher? I mean, what kind of money was set aside for that? Does anybody?
I, I think when, when we shifted, and was that before you, during?
It was before me.
I think that was under Bob Shepherd that we, we switched that. We, we had the dog pound down there by the city garage and we had a dog catcher that we, we paid.
It was under Butch Smith.
But I, but I think we, we budgeted somewhere around twenty thousand dollars a year
Yes, that's correct.
for that entire operation. And that's been many years ago. And that included the operation of the, the pound and the person's money. When I talked to Brad the other day, they, they actually pay their dog catcher five thousand dollars a year at Covington currently. But they don't operate a dog pound there either. So that was just what his salary is for the year.
Yeah, when we started thirteen years ago, it was twenty thousand from Attica and twenty thousand from the county. So we started with a forty thousand dollar budget.
Yeah, so we just shifted that money from the dog pound and the dog catcher to pause and clause at that time.
Yeah.
I, I remember during that time, I think there was a tough time getting dog catchers too. I think went through a few and then I think that's probably when they decided to.
Oh, and I'm working with, with Robert Shepherd, you know, when we started looking, he really sat down and went through the numbers with us in the very beginning, which maybe we just need to revamp that, I don't know. But, you know, we factored in, you know, the labor, the insurance, the vehicles, the fuel, you know, all of that. And it was significantly less to have us take that responsibility than have it go through the city at that time.
Well, well, clearly you've morphed over time, right? Very much so. And, and our community has as well. And so maybe it's time that we need to sit down and have a working session to really look at the numbers and see what you guys are up against and, and where we can better define this. Because we don't understand, I, I don't feel like we have a good feel for, you know, the cost.
Yeah, and that might help too, you kind of know the value of your dollar, what, what you guys are getting back. Because I think, and that's been a problem in the past too. I don't think it's actually realized because you're not seeing, you know, oh, there, there are stray cats out here. They're not doing anything. Well, you know, we're doing what we can, what we have.
Well, and maybe, maybe we find out that we need to put something in place to help the cause also. And right now, we're blaming you for everything.
Yeah.
And, and maybe that's not right, and it's probably not.
But the, the TNR though, you know, if, I, I think if we could grow that, to me, that's the long-term answer to keep this under control. And, you know, if, if we can implement more like a license or ticketing system like we were kind of talking about too, you know, if, if we do that and we can enable these ladies to go out and actually enforce it, which is the other half of the problem, you know, you could take some of those funds and maybe funnel it to, you know, the TNR program. All, all those licensing fees and everything, okay, let's space more cats.
So we could deputize them possibly?
As far as funding, I did see something that, let me see, that there was a, yeah, let's see. They had a fund, like an animal fund that could be donated to by citizens and things that would help defray the cost of spaying, neutering and chipping animals.
And we have actually got some grant money that we have put Jessica and Tyler in school where they are certified to be able to do these things. They, they have the, the legal background. They also are certified to be able to do onsite euthanases if needed to. So that, that's another place, you know, where I think your, your value is not being seen either. You know, if she goes to a call and there's a hit by a car and this dog is suffering and dying, she can go ahead and euthanize it right there on the spot. And we paid to have her have that education to be able to provide those services.
That's good.
You know, so, so those are the types of things I think that people don't understand, you know, that we're doing.
Judd, is there any way that we could get them teeth to, and actually, if they actually are able to issue citations, then they can generate revenue from that as well, correct?
I don't know about that. That'd probably be an ordinance. Well, I mean, that's, so what you're talking about is making them a code enforcement officer. And I don't know that they can get the benefit, the, the fruit of that bounty. I don't think that, I think that could be, I don't think you can do that.
Okay.
I hear what you're saying, loud and clear. And, and having a program where people are fined if you can figure out who didn't, you know, license their animal or vaccinated or chip it or whatever you're asking them to do, all legit. And that will generate some funds and you can earmark those funds to go toward, you know, cat eradication or, you know, to the stray problem, not eradication, but to try and, you know, control their population a little bit better. If you can earmark that money in a fund for sure. But in terms of saying, we're going to give you the tools to go enforce it and you get to keep the money from the enforcement, no, no disrespect to them at all. That, that's no, you can't do that. You can't, because that would turn into, you know, if I was like a building inspector and you deputized me to go after building code violations, I mean, I could make a career of it. What I'd like to do now is go ahead, if it's okay with everybody, go ahead. And there were several citizens had their hands up, so I'd like to take your questions from the citizens.
Sure.
And then we'll, we'll go ahead and move forward. Tim, I think you had, Tim Campbell, you had your hand up at one time.
I guess my question is, do you guys, does pause and clause come into Attica and set up like traps to capture the cats?
We, we haven't asked to do that before and no, we do not. We do not have the manpower and the time to do that. So what happens is we have people, hey, you can use our traps, trap them, bring them to us, we'll take care of it from there.
And I support pause and clause and animal lover, but as a consumer and as a taxpayer, that's what we pay you guys to do. And as a citizen of Attica, we're getting charged twice. Because what the county pays you comes out of the general fund, which it comes from taxes from every member of county. And what Attica pays you is coming from the taxpayers of Attica. And I have personally caught three cats and taken it out there in the last two months and said, we don't have room. So I, I mean, I, I understand, but what we have is not working. And I don't have the solution. But I'll say this, putting on my business hat, as a taxpayer, asking for more money to say, we're going to do this and this, I don't agree with that at all. And especially when we're paying thirty-some thousand dollars and the county is paying thirty thousand dollars.
Forty-four.
Forty-four for the whole county, I believe. I, I mean.
And I, and I can see where, outside looking in, yes, I could see where you would be frustrated and, and, you know, a little bit miffed, I guess, if you, you had, you needed help and you couldn't get it, yes. But it comes back down to, I don't know where we can get the resources to do anymore. You know, it's, it's expensive.
Is, is the contract, because I haven't seen the contract, is the contract, does it say animal control, okay? Because it seems to me like there might be a difference between what we envision a contract with animal control is and the services you would provide versus your idea of animal control. Is, is that the problem that we're having here?
Maybe, um, no, you don't think so. Because the scenario we've used in the past is, okay, what constitutes an animal control emergency, okay? Is it eighty-five-year-old Mrs. Smith calls and there's a cat under her porch and it's meowing all night and she wants somebody to come and get rid of it? That's not an animal control emergency, okay? No, we don't have the resources to do that. If we were doing that, we'd be doing that all day long. What, what we are doing though is helping law enforcement. So we have an aggressive animal, we have an animal that's been hit by a car, dog bites, we have a lot of dog bites. We go out there twenty-four seven, doesn't matter what time of day it is, they go out there and they assist law enforcement in taking in those animals. That is more what the type of animal control that we're more focused on. I think the nuisance animals, it's, they do get maybe deprioritized only because of funds. We don't have the resources, I don't have the manpower. I don't have the manpower to pay two or three people to go out and trap cats all day long. I just don't, this just doesn't exist.
On those aggressive animals, have you got a sense of, I'm assuming they know who the owner of that aggressive animal is. So whatever cost occurred, you should be taking that owner to court to recuperate.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Don't even take them to court, just cite them, give them a citation.
We, you could do that and then they won't pay it. And then we're stuck with the animal.
Well, if they own their house, you put a lien on it.
Yeah.
Why?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of outside their purview there.
You can't do that. I mean, I wish we could, but yeah, I mean, it would be great to hold people accountable. That would be, that, that would solve ninety percent of our problems, right? But there's always ways around it.
And not feeding the animals.
Yeah.
Because we'll say, hey, we've had your dog down here for five days, it was running at large and it got into Mr. Smith's chickens and killed eight of them, you know? And it's not vaccinated, you need to come down here, pay for your dog, pay to have a rabies vaccine. That's the only one we require because that's the one the state requires. You know, and it's going to be, we've had it for five days, it's going to be a hundred and fifty bucks. I'm not paying it, you keep the dog and they hang up.
We have a couple other questions over here, trying to get through the citizens, yes.
I will, I will admit, I'm someone that feeds feral cats. All feral cats I feed, I paid out of my pocket.
I'm sorry, would you state your name, please?
Connie Fingers.
I know who it is, but.
For the record, for the record.
Anyway, I have paid, because it never fails, every time I take one, it's a female, sixty bucks a piece. Erica fixes my cats for me and I pay her to do it. And it has tremendously knocked down the population across the street from me, which is Harrison's heel. Those animals come over, they know what time feeding time is at night, they come over, they eat and they go back where they came from. But there's another lady out there running around, feeding here and feeding there and she said she gets food from you guys to feed it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. She's not telling us that.
That's what she told me a couple of weeks ago, she said, you guys shut her off, you weren't going to give her no more food.
Oh, okay. I don't know, but no, we, we, we don't, we don't.
This is the lady that told me she was feeding several hundred pounds of cats.
And the other thing is, we need, we need to have a program, it's a TNR where more than just you guys have to do it. Now, I have taken one cat out to your place to get it fixed, you know? But you always have to be on the schedule to do it. Well, I might set a trap and I don't get a cat.
Yes.
So then I have to call and cancel that. So then I have to call and cancel that appointment to be safe for me. That's why I put one out there, you know. But I mean, I would be a person, and I know some more people, that would be interested in helping trap. I just helped a lady from last Thursday, we trapped Thursday, she took them to the University of Illinois on Friday, got them fixed, brought them back, and they get them for nothing, this four minutes and over there. Pretty does not do anything like that.
No, they don't do it. But we do. I mean, but.
Well, I know, but that's good for many students. And then we took care of them that night. And then yesterday, Saturday, the male's dog, take him back. Sunday, she took the females back.
Yeah, Dr. Hines and I are only, you know, two people. So.
But I, I, I know people that would be interested if we could do a certain number every week. Anything you do is going to help. Anything we can get done is going to help, it's going to cut it down. I used to think if you got rid of the males and everybody said, no, you need to do females first. So I think we did at least fifteen from Attica.
I say we deputize Connie.
I think we got our cat person.
And it's, and it's a lot of, well.
It's going to take a lot of time.
I've got three baby kittens at home now. I'm bottle feeding, trying to keep alive.
Okay, we got, we got another lady here that's wanting to speak here.
Um, if, if, if we could have something that was like low cost, like what does it cost to trap and release the cat? Like to fix it and all of them? What is your cost?
Um, if, if you don't include the veterinarian service, if you just include, you know, the, the tests and the kenneling and the anesthesia and all that, um, not the actual veterinarian providing the service, it's about fifty bucks. Hmm, spays are longer than castrations.
I mean, from the time you got the cat for a transfer.
Oh, a day?
I mean, I don't think anybody's taking that into account. How much time?
It's, it's a twenty-four hour, a twenty-four hour thing. What we have, yeah, we have to make sure they're.
Maybe donation would be better than nothing. You know, I mean, I just give you guys twenty that, Connie, it helps with anything.
Well, that's the thing, like I have several, I've been doing the trap and release for a couple of years with Jessica. That's the thing, like I may sell out a trap and I don't get anything, and then I have to call her, and then that's a spot that could have been used for another trap.
Larry, there's, there's, we're getting a lot of good input right now.
Yeah, I think so.
But, but the thing is, I think the show must go on. You know, is, is there?
That's where I was trying to go.
Can we, is there a way that we could actually just have a special session deal with this? Or, or do we, do we, how can we, because we need to have this just on its own, own item, I think.
Yeah, we can have a, we, it wouldn't even have to be a council.
No.
We can have a, we can have a discussion. Ma'am, you've been holding your hand up forever.
I have. Okay. I'm born and raised farm girl in Indiana. Okay. Why are we not, why are we fixing them and releasing them? You know, you can only have so many pets in town. You should only have so many pets. Why we have, why are we releasing all these cats back into the, for someone else to try to feed them and they're not anybody's pets? I don't understand it. So being a farm girl, there's sometimes there's, you know, you could talk about you being all you want, but sometimes we have to, because what happens is they inbreed and then you have these cats running around with no tails, that eye missing here and there. It's not a good combination. I think that, my opinion, for us to get rid of the problem now and continue maybe with Paws and Claws to help in the future, we need to do something about the majority of the population now. And if it's inhumane to everybody sitting here, I don't care, but they may need to just be euthanized and, and go forward. I know you all.
And if that's really the only choice, if we don't want them in town and you don't have room for them, I mean, that's.
That's what farms.
I'm sorry, I know who you are, but simply state your name for the record.
Oh, Sandra Dunn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I've been listening to this now for several years. Nothing gets better. And I'm going to tell you that I'm tired of my garbage being dumped out. I'm tired of watching all the other animals come and eat the food across the street that people are feeding. I'm tired of it.
Garrett's not here right now. I see.
Okay, we need to, we need to reel this back in here before we, before we move on.
People have created the problem. They didn't, they decided they don't want it anymore because it's not cute and cuddly. And they just open the door and let it go. And that's where you get feral cats from on down the road.
Okay, we're going to reel this back in, uh, talk amongst the council here and then we'll move on.
I'd say I have two questions, I guess. I've been doing a lot of reading about this. And I've reached out and spoke to a lot of the people that, that feed the animals and know the situation a lot better than me. And they, they, they put these numbers up and do hundreds. There's consec, you know, what I keep hearing, hundreds. And, and some of these things, it says that, you know, these, a, a single female can have five litters of cats, of kittens a year, ranging anywhere between three to six at a time. And there's even one that had nineteen. Now, these are exponential numbers that these things are happening. You're talking about progress and talking about numbers that we, variables that we don't really know, but let's just assume two hundred, you know, being the lowest plural of hundreds. If we got two hundred of them and just fifty percent of them are female, there, how, how many of these cats are we going to have to spay and neuter in a week to make any kind of actual progress? I figure no less than twenty a week. And that's, I think, conservative.
Essentially, yeah. Because, because they'll go into heat, you know, multiple times a year.
Yeah. Well, it says heat cycle between fourteen and twenty-one days. And after they reach puberty, between five and nine months, yeah, they can just crank them out.
Yeah.
And, um.
That's how it explodes so quick.
I, and so my question to you is, is if we got hundreds, what's a realistic number to actually make progress on this issue a week, spay and neuter?
I mean, how many could we spay and neuter potentially?
I mean, how many do we need to accomplish getting spayed and neutered to make any kind of progress? And I guess if you want to have a secondary question, yeah, how many are you capable of doing? Because we need to know if, if we need to bring in more agencies to help with this. If it's not, I, I don't think one single agency can do this.
Agreed.
You know, in Paws and Claws defense, I think if we get this maintained, you know, get it solved, that you could, you know, maintain the population once we get it under control. But getting it under control, the elephant's growing faster than we can eat it.
Yes.
We need SWAT team to just come in and, I don't mean shoot the cats, though. But I mean, to come in, we need a group of people.
We just need to scare them off.
Even if you trap it, though, what are you going to do with it?
Exactly. That's the other problem.
There's a problem, actually.
So, so I guess, do you have any kind of estimate, despite, other than the people that have been feeding the animals and things, you are probably closer to the situation than, than anyone else? Do you have a, a conservative estimate of how many a week we need to spay and neuter to actually make real progress on this?
Can I also, can I piggyback off that too? Where I, Sandra also might be right. We're not, I, I, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that. But.
Yes, and there's a, it, it's a dangerous mind walk.
I know, and it's, this is an unpopular thing for me to say. I know that people are, but we, we have to make progress somewhere. And I'm not, I understand, you made a hundred per, you made a ton of sense today. I appreciate you coming in and explaining a lot of that. I just, to get to where you're saying, like, what's, what are you capable of?
But what do you think is the number that needs to be done?
Um, you know, if it's just me, um, I could probably do like five a week.
How many do you think we need to do a week to make progress?
Um, I would say if you have two hundred of them, maybe twenty-five a week.
That's about where I put my math at, which I was hoping it was going to be way off.
And that's being conservative in that two hundred number, because we, we think it probably is more.
So twenty to twenty-five a week is what I was thinking. And you say you're capable of doing five? That tells us that we're going to need more than one avenue here. Now, my second question is, what criteria is, has to be met for a cat to not be released back but euthanized?
That's a good question.
Diseases, aggression.
Well, they're all feral cats are aggressive. They're all aggressive.
They're not cuddly. They don't like you.
A lot of them are sick. And if they are clinically ill when they're presented to us, I euthanize them. I do not try to rehab them and then put them back out.
Like when you say clinically ill, I guess, uh, some of the.
If I feel, I mean, I, I guess it's completely upon my judgment. If I feel that animal is going to suffer, if I put it back in the environment, I euthanize it. So we have some pets that come in, you know, that are missing an eye or, you know.
Right. I guess here are some of the viruses I saw. It was, uh, there, because one of the persons I talked to, they just emphasized that the transmitted diseases between these animals is absolutely rampant. Um, says they don't ever die of old age. And I got some things I got here on the internet, contagious diseases such as herpes viral conjitis, conjunctivitis. I should know that. I'm a medical guy. Feline age, leukemia, infectious parotinitis, and others. Is there, any of these are not curable? They have to be euthanized when they have them? I mean, economically, I guess, I hate to put a money value on life.
In, in the shelter world, no, we euthanize them. Because we don't have the funds and we don't have the resources to, to rehab them.
So of these hundreds of cats that we got, it's pretty safe to say that many of them are infected with diseases that are going to require them to be euthanized?
If, if they come in and they're presenting clinically, because a lot of them can have subclinical infections too, that, that we can't see with the naked eye.
Carriers kind of thing.
But if they come in and they're, they're thin or dehydrated, they can't breathe because they're so congested, um, those are the animals, yeah, that we let them go. We let them go. Now, but a lot of them come in healthy, I'll tell you. A lot of people think these cats are well, and they come in healthy.
Um, one of my big problems that I ran into when speaking with these people is that most of them, you know, it was said that a man who procrastinates in his choosing, has his choice made for him inevitably, you know, by procrastinating, the choice is made for him. And I'm afraid that every day that goes by, this choice is going to be made for us. We're not going to have as many options as we want. We're going to end up getting painted into a corner of having to engage in things that none of us want to do.
Sounds like we're already there.
It sounds like we're already there. Um, I guess, and the big problem is, is that some of the people I talked to expressed that they know that citizens are taking things into their own hands.
And that is on them, you know. We have no beefs with that. If they were on my property and they were a nuisance and they were spreading disease, I would be more like a farm girl and be like, hey, this is a problem. But when you get to, you know, a publicly funded organization, you know, we can't, we can't make that call.
Well, yeah, and I'm just saying that it, I don't like that citizens feel that that's their only option.
Well.
You know, but it's just, that's, and that's my point, is that when they feel that it's their only option, we have gotten to a level, I believe, that it's serious.
Yeah. And we aren't exterminators, you know. I, I, we're not going to go out and steal much cats. I just can't do that.
No, I, I, I don't want you to have to do. I don't want that.
We're, we're an hour into this discussion.
Okay, yeah, and I'm sorry, you answered my questions. I appreciate it.
I apologize, everybody still wants to talk, but.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. And, and I, I think Johnny's probably right. We need to, we need to circle the wagons here and maybe have a pointed discussion meeting some, and I don't think we can set it tonight, but we can, we can set up a meeting when everybody that's interested, wants to come, we'll just talk about cats all evening.
I'm about a cat person.
So maybe we can have a brainstorming session anyway.
Well, I appreciate you, um, having this dialogue with us too.
Thank you.
Because it makes me feel better to be able to explain ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
So you all know what we're doing and where the money's going.
Yes, appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, moving on into unfinished business, annexation of Harrison Hills and Property South. Uh, I know, uh, Mr. Barres sent out a annexation proposal to one of the property owners south of town. I haven't heard back from him yet. I don't think you have either, but I'm going to reach out to him, uh, probably this week and try to get his thoughts. Um, update council on the ambulance relocation process or progress. Uh, I did, uh, reach out to the school again this week and asked them what their status was. Um, I'm kind of getting mixed signals, uh, right now as to whether they're going to donate the property that we've asked for for the ambulance shed. Uh, I know that there was some feedback to some of the school officials didn't want it there. And, uh, I don't quite understand that, but I've offered to go talk to the school board or whoever needs to, to hear it, uh, to try to belay some of their concerns and, and fears. Um, you know, it's one of those situations, I think, where everybody agrees it's needed, but not everybody can agree where. And, uh.
It, we have to get it, it, it's horrible where it is. Nobody is, would agree that it's in a good place.
It, it's not, and it's not, it's not a good building. Uh, there's a lot of reasons to get it moved. Um, I, I think, I still contend that this is very centrally located. It's property that is already owned by the public, uh, through the school system. And the citizens wouldn't have to go out and spend money that we don't have to buy property. Uh, that there are very few alternative spots for this to go on city-owned property. And some of those are going to be even much less desirable to the public than what this spot is. I'll just say that. Um, and, and, you know, I've gone out and driven around town and some of the places that were suggested to me are, it just moves the problem from one area to another. I, I think that, uh, if you didn't like it here, you're certainly not going to like it there. Uh, but as long as, uh, as long as we're in that situation, it's not good. But hopefully the, they'll do the right thing and, and we'll, we'll get a, a spot for it and we can move forward with that.
I was going to ask too, Mr. Mayor, if, uh, the county's going to help us at all with any of that.
I really haven't talked with, the county's been involved in some of the meetings that we've had with the business leaders in the city. Um, the county is, is obviously going to be utilizing it.
Right.
But we don't know what the future's going to bring with the ambulance and the new fire territory, ten years down the road. And I, I didn't want to close the door on the fire territory, uh, because the county could say, well, you know, we've got money in that building as well. And, uh, I, I, I just, I kind of like to keep that separated.
Okay.
If, if you know what I'm saying.
Larry, speaking of money, and this goes to the budget, I was just kind of looking through it.
We're going to get there.
Okay. Well, I just, uh, the very first two line items here is what you're talking about. The, um, the casino, the casino fund has forty grand allocated for any ambulance building?
That's, that's for the match.
Okay, oh, it is, okay. And then there's, uh, the rainy day fund has all fifty-nine thousand.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to that.
Okay, all right. I, I don't know what, what we should talk about.
Yeah, we've got this thing on the agenda here called budget discussion. And it's coming up. Uh, city cleanup, uh, the last one went really, really well. I want to thank everybody that was involved with that. The October dates have been set. That'll be the seventeenth and eighteenth. Uh, once again, the Attica football team has stepped up to help. And, uh, they'll be available that Saturday, obviously not Friday, because they'll have a football game Friday night. Uh, I, we haven't really moved forward on anything with the outdoor refreshment area. Cindy, that's nothing right now. I take it?
No, you know, because of the fact that we wouldn't be able to get approved at the state there, check off on it before, uh, here at each state.
So we've just kind of let that simmer for a little while?
Yeah.
Uh, riverfront kids park update, that equipment is on order. It's due here sometime in November. Uh, weather permitting, we'll go ahead and get that installed. Uh, dog park project update, uh, I did take a little trip last Saturday, and I can pass this around. Uh, the only dog park in the area that I could find was in Rockville. Uh, theirs was sponsored by a, a local manufacturer down there of dog accessories, if you will, uh, Scott Pet Products. And, uh, just guessing that area that, that you're looking at there in the photos is about, uh, a hundred by a hundred. uh, a hundred by a hundred by a hundred. It's a triangle. Uh, just looking at the fence posts, I, I kinda guessed that. It's only a, it's a short fence with a double gate on it. Uh, it's only a four-foot fence. Uh, not really elaborate, but I understand it does get used. It's adjacent to their park. I spoke with the, uh, park board regarding where to put it and how big. And they suggested that we just go with what HWC had recommended and there's no way we've got enough money to do that. They, they suggested like a large area for large dogs and other large area for small dogs. And they, they suggested that we put it down there on the lots, uh, where we tore the house down, down the riverfront. And I'm not even sure that that's feasible. Uh, I haven't gotten any quotes on fencing yet. Uh, because I'm still trying to discern how big to make it and that sort of thing, but uh, not for the lack of trying. Like I said, I even drove clear to Rockville the other day.
I think there's one in West Lafayette also at Salisbury.
There is.
Okay.
And it's very.
I've never seen it.
You have to get a license to go there. You pay a fee every year to take your dog there. You get an electronic key fob to get in.
We probably don't want that.
It's, it's highly regulated. The one in Rockville is a use at your own risk. Uh, they, they don't guarantee that there's no parbo. They don't guarantee that there's nothing there that's gonna hurt your dog.
You notice the fire hydrant out in the middle there?
Yeah.
It's not looking good.
I don't know whether that was there for decoration, but I did notice that. There is a.
It gets used.
There is a watering.
It's been used.
Station out there in the, kind of in the area, in the triangle where they have a, a hole there that has water in it. Uh, they, as you can see, there's a place there to pick up bags when you go in and a place to dump the, the soiled bags on your way out. There's a larger gate there so they can get a mower in. But anyway, uh, that's kind of all the further I am with that right now. This, this project hasn't been like the pickleball courts where there was a large group of people wanting to help make that happen.
We need some champions.
This is.
Civilian champions.
We, we do. I, I, but this doesn't have a large budget either, you know. This is a fifteen thousand dollar budget that we bestowed on this. So anyway, that's where we're at with the dog park. Still working on it. Haven't forgotten about it.
I will be right back. I have to go to get Jordan from Danes.
Okay. Old pool property status with Attica Rec. Do you have anything to update us on Denise with that? Uh, there's surveying going on right now.
Work's making their way as far as funding. It's going slow, but it is steady. Um, as far as the purchase of it, we're just waiting on the survey to come back to find out what this council will do as far as selling it to us. So, we, we have big plans.
I met with the surveyor up there last week and kinda gave him a arm wave.
Who is the surveyor?
Uh, Grace, I think is her name, out of Lafayette. Building permit fees for sites along the state right of way requiring engineering. Judd, have you come up with anything?
I didn't do, I will have that for you by the end of the week. I apologize.
Okay, we're, we're quickly losing our junior council members here, it looks like. Yeah, I don't think that's a, you know, fire that needs to be put out tonight, but as, as we move forward with these projects along the right of way, I don't think city will be picking up the tab for them, particularly if they're not, not inside the city elements.
Was it, was it important that it be among the state right of ways or any right of ways?
Well, the, the state is the one that requires the most extensive engineering costs. Am I saying that accurately, Eric? I mean.
Your drainage standard is, is kind of what's killing us on everything.
I mean, if, if, if we're putting it on a city street, it's a, it's usually an Eric engineering study that's done.
So we're talking in the two-mile fringe though, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and along.
And, and along the state right of ways inside the city.
Gotcha. I didn't, I didn't know that. I didn't know that you were looking at inside the city too.
Yeah, 'cause we'll take, I don't know, take one of the businesses locating out here on the east side of town. The state requires that as well and, and I don't think the city should have to fund an engineering study for that.
Okay, I understand.
Uh, health insurance update. Open enrollment for the employees begins October fifteenth. And AIM will be onsite on that day here, uh, to speak to all the employees that are interested. Uh, they'll, they'll have a Q and A session required regarding the two plans that are being offered by the city this year. And hopefully that'll go smoothly. Uh, there was no, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, there was no increase in the, uh, in the costs this year, so they, they held that to zero, which I don't think that's ever happened. So that's good. Go ahead and move to new business. Uh, we're required to have a public budget hearing, so at this time I'll suspend the meeting and open a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-six budget. Uh, information has been posted publicly, so it is available for the budget. And we'll have that discussion internally here after the hearing. Okay? So is there anybody in the public that has any questions regarding the budget that was published?
I have one question. I'm not on any social medias, Facebook or anything. I go to the city council website, but where else are you publishing it for people like me that's not on social media? Where can you get a copy or?
Right here. Come pick it up.
It gets published also on Gateway.
We're required by the state to publish it through Indiana Gateway. And you can just Google, um, Indiana Council. You can, um, Google Indiana Gateway and you literally can see all of the financials for every municipality in the state of Indiana. Everything.
Oh, yeah.
No, I do. I just was in the wrong folder. I have my folder, not the public folder.
Cause I don't see any.
But yeah, like I said, good Indiana Gateway, you can see anything and everything for any municipality you'd ever want. Here's the notice, Sandra.
Pardon?
Here's the other piece of it. This is what was actually published to Indiana Gateway.
Okay.
The notice to taxpayers. You're welcome. Anybody else like a copy? Come get it, Denise. And you know how to use Indiana Gateway.
I know how to use it.
Just second, let me give you the expense one too. That's just the notice that was published.
Denise.
There you go. All right.
I thought you girls were leaving me. Scared bit for a quick. Okay, if there aren't any more comments, we'll go ahead to close the public hearing at this time and move on to the budget discussion amongst council members. And you should have copies.
So, I've got one that I, I forgot to bring this up before, but you know, we get emails from different places through our government, our government email accounts. And we, I think we all got it, that was, uh, due to the opioid, there's an opioid settlement that, um, is coming through for the city of Attica. And I don't remember what the dollar amount was or anything. But I guess I was going to ask, okay, did you guys get that email? And if you did, where, are we gonna get some additional money that's gonna come in here?
I don't know how much additional money that we're going to get on it. Um, in the unrestricted fund, we have about seventeen thousand dollars. It's not anything to speak of at all. Um, in the non-restricted fund, it's even less than that. So I would say that we've probably got about twenty-five thousand dollars total after, over the last couple of years and.
So it's been going on for.
For, yeah, yeah, for a couple of years and opioid money. And the, the funds come in as different drug companies settle lawsuits and then we get a, a piece of it, a small piece of it. There are very, very restrictive parameters in how that can be used. It can't be used in a general fund. Programs have to be established. Um, usually through law enforcement or, you know, public health or something like that to be able to use those funds. So those funds aren't really available for our general operation.
Operation.
Right, right. And it's not much at all.
Well, when you say health, could it be addressed to the cat population?
No.
You don't think so?
Lots are taking drugs.
I just, I, I didn't know much about it, so nobody's really talked about it. And so I thought, well, where, where could it be used?
Like bigger communities like Lafayette, I mean, they're getting, you know, you know, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars. But you know, our small communities, we're not getting much at all. Not enough to really be, be able to even develop and run a program with. So.
Well, I was just kinda curious.
To, to kinda get back to your question from a little while ago on the, on the ambulance building. The, the grant looks like it's probably on track. And that's gonna be about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Originally, we thought it was gonna be five-hundred thousand dollars. And they, they upped the amount that we could get on that grant, so it's seven-fifty. The, the estimated cost of that building, if we don't have to buy any property, is about one-point-one million. Uh, if we build it per the, the spec that was kind of the boilerplate spec from other ones that have been built. And that saves a little bit of money too, because you're not reinventing the wheels there through the architect. Now, could we do some value engineering on that maybe and knock that price down possibly? But I had asked, uh, to, to put about three-hundred thousand dollars in the budget from different sources for the match side of that grant. And, and that kinda gets us close to where we need to be.
But you're taking the money, you're, are you taking all the money out of those funds for the next year then for that? Or?
It's not all the money from those funds, but they, they took.
Well, I saw one line item, so I didn't know.
They took a little bit out of this one, a little bit of that, out of that one to try to, to come up with that. And then the other high-dollar number was our match for the community crossroads uh, for roads. Uh, and that was three-hundred thousand dollars as well.
That's one-point-five million, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, it's one-point-five.
Okay, yeah.
We, we had, and they upped that, the amount that we could get as well. The good thing on that was that we had put quite a bit of money in it for this year. I say good because it, it didn't turn out to be good because they, they essentially canceled that for this year, but we still had some funds left over from this year that will rotate over into this budget. So we can, we can still have the three-hundred thousand dollars for the match for that, uh, for this year.
And speak, speaking of that, because those funds weren't used this year, we're going to have to, we, I'm going, you're, you will need to approve and I will need to submit to the state board of accounts a budget reduction. It basically is saying that, you know, when, when money is budgeted, the DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance assumes anything that you have budgeted, you're going to spend. Since we're not going to spend that three-hundred dollars and we want.
Three-hundred thousand.
Three-hundred thousand dollars and we want that included in our budget for twenty-twenty-six, we'll have to send it to them saying, we're not going to spend this money. We're reducing the current year's budget so that they will then approve it to be a next year's budget. And that's just a, a process.
So we're, we're gonna get that three-hundred thousand back then for?
We're, we have it. We're just not, we're just telling them we're not gonna spend it this year. We're gonna spend it next year.
So we'll get six-hundred thousand instead then?
No, no. We've budgeted three-hundred thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-five that we're not going to use. We're going to tell.
Re-budgeting it.
We're re-budgeting it, but in order, in order for us to be able to budget the three-hundred thousand from this year, next year, we have to tell them we're not using it this year. It's still available to budget next year.
Is there any way to shift, you probably can't shift it into any other accounts then for this year then?
We're not lose it. It's our money. We're just telling them we're not spending it. It, it doesn't go away. It's in our bank account.
It just means we're gonna spend it next year instead of this year, but we need to tell them that we're gonna do that. So the good thing, like I said, the good news is that we don't have to come up with an additional three-hundred thousand dollars in twenty-six because we're gonna use the three-hundred that we budgeted for twenty-five in twenty-six.
So part of what you see that we've advertised is the three-hundred thousand from this year that we've not spent.
Oh, okay. Cause I, I was talking to Dwayne about this and I, when we were looking through the numbers, I was asking, this is my first time through, that, you know, here are the published numbers. And I said, are these the numbers the same pretty much every year? And he said, yeah, for the most part.
On a lot of things.
Those were the big, those were the big ticket, what I'll call shifts uh, this year. You know, I, I think before we only put, help me out, Dwayne, eighty thousand in community crossroads, but that took us a lot further.
Yeah.
Several years ago than what that kind of money will do today.
And the cost has gone up so much since twenty-twenty, everything's gone up.
It's not like we're paving three times as many roads as what we did back then, even though that would have been nice. Uh, we're, we're still only paving a certain amount of roads. And, and those were all determined by working with Eric and, and HWC for our road study and which ones had the most traffic and which ones really needed it. So we came up with a list to send to the state. There was a bunch of hoops we had to jump through for community crossroads this year. We had to have several things updated, uh, that I never even knew we had. And, and I don't think it's been done in years. I, the la, which one was it, Joanne? There was a, there was a Title IX report, or not Title IX, Title IV report that had to be done. And I found one, but it was done by maybe Bob Shepherd or Butch.
I might have never needed it.
No, you didn't. You didn't. But, but this year, they're really being sticklers on all your ducks being in a row. And they did send out an email that said, hey, if this and this and this and this is not done, you won't get any money. So I've, I've spent an inordinate amount of time in the last few months making sure that all those crosses, Ts were crossed and Is were dotted, so we can make sure that we're eligible for that money. And HWC's working on getting all that sent in so that we are first in line. And that's, that's coming out. I, I've got it on the bottom of the agenda here, but I think it's October the first, is that they're gonna start taking applications for community crossroads for twenty-six. And then hopefully we'll get in the, and they're only gonna have one draw next year. And that's what got us in trouble. They had two draws for every, every year for the last ten years probably. And we always did the second one. And then the state decided this last year that after the first one, they weren't gonna do the second one. So the, it's like, okay. So that's what got us in trouble. So we're gonna get first in line this year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, all the food was gone by the time we showed it.
Exactly. That's a good way to put it, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I understood because when, you know, I was hearing that, th- these are our numbers pretty much the same every year. And we got this three-hundred we didn't spend. It's like, I was thinking, okay, we're gonna get the three-hundred and the three-hundred.
It's not a bonus.
Oh, okay.
It's just take it out of this pocket and move it to the other one.
So, so one of the things that, you know, I know that, um, we, we set through the APC and the redevelopment commissions. And it's clear that people are concerned about the aesthetics. Um, and for me, you know, there's, they're focusing on the individual properties. But, um, I think the Parks Department's doing a really good job. And is there any way to where we can allocate more money to the Parks Department?
We don't allocate it. They have their own tax, their own, um, what, General?
Their own funding, right?
Well, they're not raising their own funding. They have their own tax rate. I mean, we can shift, um, tax rate from the general fund and reduce the general fund tax rate to increase the park tax rate. But then the general, um, tax rate is what we're funding all the city operations out of. So there, i- it's not a matter of shifting more money into their budget. It's what their property taxes, based on their tax rate, is generating. So the only way to do that is to reduce the tax rate in another area and shift it to park.
And the parks did get a three-hundred thousand dollar shot in the arm this year with the pickleball courts and, and the equipment down along the river. So that was, that was a shot in the arm that, that really didn't come out of their funds.
I'm surprised how much traffic goes through Ravine Park since it started playing pickleball there. There's all kinds of traffic.
You know, I think, I think traffic has picked up down there. I think people are more interested in the park now. And I know we're getting off the subject here, but uh, I, I think that it's, for lack of a better term, revitalizing.
I think so.
Ravine Park. And I think that.
Play equipment started that.
Once these guys, uh, get moving down there on the, on the pool building and, you know, even aside from the pool itself, uh, w- once that building is more viable to be used, I think that it'll benefit the entire.
And I did see the porta-potties were getting used quite a bit too.
Yeah.
That's coming out of the park budget too.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get off track.
That's okay, back to the budget. So, so.
So, so, so on the general fund, I know we're running tight and everything, but so, so we really don't think that there's an ability to get any more. I, I mean, I know they had that money that came in, but I think they're doing a good job, and you guys.
They are, and they're pretty good at spending.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
What they have.
I mean, yeah, they're very, they're very conscious of their budget, and, you know, I hear them talking about it. And I really thought that if somebody was needing more money, they would probably take care of it real well.
No, I think that, I think that everybody wants more money, obviously, in their budget. I, I know that, you know, with the priorities, right now, I, we've been meeting with, you know, the department heads. Eric, Eric needs a new dump truck, needs a new backhoe, and that's something that's been put off for a very long time. You'll find that in the budget. Garrett's police cars are due to be cycled through some of the, some of the Dodge Durangos that they bought, should have probably never been bought. They, they've turned out to be money pits, and those need to go away as we move into this, the effects of this Senate Bill One. In the next two or three or four years, however long that's going to affect us. I, I told everybody that if we're going to buy them, we need to buy them now while the money's there, because in two years, the money may not be there. So, I, I wouldn't want to need police cars in two years and then say, well, where are we going to come up with the money? At least right now, the money is available and in the budget, and, and we know that we're going to have that money. I know Garrett's got some money left over from this last year's budget, because he really didn't spend that much. But as that money dries up, that's, most of the, that money's coming from local income tax, which is going away. And it's kind of an unknown right now what, what the county's going to do as far as, we can petition them to levy a local income tax for us, but they can keep seventy-five percent of it, which doesn't help us a whole lot. But I don't know that, you know, as Nate said, that may be negotiable. I, I can't imagine other municipalities not asking, and Covington will probably ask them to do the same thing. So, you know, hopefully, they'll do for us what they do for Covington and vice versa. But that's kind of an unknown, which is kind of scary to me.
Jimmy and I had a chance to talk to Matt Commons and Spencer Deary, and we were talking about the challenges with the Senate Bill One. And they weren't really aware of the fact that, like, the wheel tax, they said, well, you guys could do a wheel tax. And I said, no, we can't, because we're thirty-two hundred, thirty-two hundred stronger.
I reiterated that to him, too.
Yeah, and then, and so they said, but they did tell us that there, there are some options, and they're working on it, but they do think that we're going to get some reprieve on that by twenty twenty seven.
And that's, I think that's what everybody's hanging their hat on right now, that, that they will make some changes that will help us out. But until they do, they haven't.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You can't, you can't take that to the bank just yet. Those were the, those were the, the main things. I know that the equipment, the, the police cars, the, the matches for those two grants were the, were the big things.
And is that coming out of the general fund then?
It depends on what it is. I mean, if you look through the budget, the ambulance building is actually spread, I think, between three or four funds. Some coming out of Casino Riverboat, some coming out of Rainy Day, some coming out of local income tax, and.
And, and, you know, that may sound like a lot to spend on that ambulance building, but I, I think when we're done, we'll, number one, we'll have something. That's, that's viable. Number two, I think we could easily spend a half million dollars to renovate the building that's down there now and still not have anything.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, I see this as a win-win.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, Larry, I just.
A lot of them are saying for the public's benefit, too.
Yeah, I, I think that, I'm just worried about taking and draining all those accounts, you know, for just one particular, you know, golden, trinket kind of thing, you know?
But it'll be two bays, right?
Two bays instead of one, and it'll be hopefully in a lot better location.
Yeah.
And, and it'll be a, a nice place for the crews to stay instead of where they're at down there. Have you ever been in down there?
So, so Larry, this is, this is in the twenty twenty six budget, right? The money's to be spent. Now, the grant, we, we've got the grant, it's nailed down, we've got it?
We, we do not have approval for the grant yet, but, but you have to have the match available.
Okay.
To even apply for it. And so, so we couldn't leave it out of the budget. If it doesn't get spent next year, then hopefully, the grant would come through the next year in twenty seven. But we'd still have that money to move forward.
Yeah, okay, but this one, though, okay, make sure I understand this. Okay, this is money in twenty twenty six, so Rainy Day Fund, for example, we've got fifty, fifty-nine thousand, or fifty-nine thousand. Okay, so if you earmark that for twenty twenty six, and it does not get spent in twenty twenty six.
It's going to move.
But we should still get another fifty-nine thousand in twenty twenty seven, right?
Not necessarily, because the Rainy Day Fund is just funded, correct me if I'm wrong. It's just money that's left over, and we move it to the Rainy Day Fund, so we can spend it. So, if you had money left in the, Larry, Grant Retirement Fund at the end of the, there isn't one, by the way. It's, it's a, you can move it over there as a placeholder.
Okay.
It's not, it doesn't have, doesn't have revenue, it's just.
Okay.
It's just funds that have been moved into the Rainy Day Fund, literally to save for future projects.
Well, I, what I'm scared of, and I know this does happen sometimes, but it's a use it or lose it kind of thing.
No.
And I don't want, I just want to make sure we're not in that situation.
No, that's one of those funds that's just a, hey, I'm going to pack this away in savings, because we then spend it on something that we thought we were going to.
None of our funds are use it or lose it, literally. That's why when we do the budget, we try to, we make sure that the budget is structured in a way that we receive the maximum levy or the maximum revenues that we can receive. None of it's use it or lose it. Once we receive it, it's ours.
Okay.
So, and even if we don't spend it in this budget year, we don't lose it. So, it's not use it or lose it, it's just our money, and we're just telling them how, how we plan on spending it. If we're not going to spend it this year, the money doesn't go away. You know, like what we were talking about earlier with the community crossing, the three hundred thousand dollars that we did use. While the money's still there, we still have it, we're just telling them we're not using it this year, but we're going to use it next year, and we've included it in next year's budget. So, we're not asking for an additional three hundred thousand, we're just asking for the same three hundred thousand we asked for this year. So, none of our revenues are use it or lose it, none of them are. But we need to make sure that our budgets are structured in a way, every single year, that we get the maximum amount of revenues that we're entitled to receive.
And the way you would lose it is if you don't ask for it, because.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, if you don't ask for it, you don't get it. They give you what you ask for, and if you don't ask for the maximum, you don't get the maximum.
Seems, seems kind of counterintuitive, I know. I, I told somebody the other day, it was kind of like, you know, when my kids come and ask for ten dollars to go to McDonald's, and the meal's only going to be five.
You don't get any back, do you?
No, I don't get any back. Any other questions or comments?
So, one other thing, I, I was, you know, of course, the professionals have been seeing upticks, okay, in their salaries, okay, and you guys are the two key cogs in the wheel, besides Eric and the other guys. And, and are, should we talk about your salaries and increasing them?
We have, we have salary ordinance.
Yeah, but, but it was only the four percent in there, and so, should, should that, should we talk about that as an additional increase? I know you both burn a lot of hours up, and, a lot, and a lot more than you're getting paid for. If you take a look at your, probably your average pay rate.
What is that, Larry?
I figured I was about forty an hour, but I think I'm down around ninety cents.
So, so I'm, I'm okay with talking about this, because I know, I see the hours you guys put in, I know the grief you go through.
Well, Joanne does get salary, I mean.
Yeah.
But Larry, the mayor never has.
He gets a salary, it's just not much.
Yeah. The mayor never has had a very big salary, and I would agree with that, just from being a mayor. Even though I didn't, wasn't able to put the time Larry put in, it's still, if you, if you wait it out, it really don't pay very much.
Well, and I've said a lot of times, you know, if you're in this for the, for the money, you're in the wrong business, but you should be out.
I think we could do a little bit better, don't you?
I'll stay out of that one.
Just, just, just food for thought. There are a lot of municipalities who are not giving pay raises at all because of the upcoming SEA One. I know bordering counties have halted, froze all pay raises for all employees. And they aren't even doing the four percent, which is what Larry's, you know, has.
And that was the growth quotient, quotient provided by the state, right? And that's, that's why I said four percent across the board. Now, that, if you look at that salary ordinance, that is not really across the board, because we, we had some equity issues there. We had some, some park program folks that were making more than some employees were making. And, and the park program folks did not receive a raise in, in my proposal again this year, where like the park mowers and those people that are out doing work all summer long did receive a raise, but they're still making considerably less than the park program folks are. So, I'm trying to kind of balance that out a little bit.
I had to fight that, too, but their point was they're working with kids and all that. And you can't argue, but you can.
And they're still making a lot more money than the people out.
Exactly.
Doing labor, so.
Well, I think, I think both of you guys are doing a great job, first of all, and I think that, but I, and I know you're putting a lot of hours in. And so, the thing is, when you put those hours in, that means that you're covering costs that would be otherwise covered elsewhere. And, and so, in my opinion, so, like I said, I'm, I'm okay for opening that up for discussion, and I don't know.
I just don't know where that money would come from.
Well, I don't either, but we're talking about budget right now, right?
Yeah, we are.
I know I just came in, but do you have me to make my point? Does anybody know what I'm going to talk about? That I talk about? Not about tax, what I'm going to talk about every year, I told Caleb I wasn't going to bring it up.
We're done with cats.
I'm not talking about cats, I'm talking about salary, I'm talking about salaries. What do you think I'm going to bring up? Do you know what I'm going to bring, does anybody, you two, know what I'm going to tell?
Evaluations.
That we told last, that we said, now for the last two years, that we've said, what are we going to do? We're going to do evaluations, we're going to do merit.
I never said we're going to do evaluations.
Well, we talked, we talked, this was, this was, this was talked about, this was done, this was something that we, and I know it's unpopular. I know lots of people out there that hate me for this, but you know what? We cannot continue to give raises based on, guess what, guys? Nothing. Nothing.
Amen.
It's based on nothing. Do I think that people deserve them? Yes, I do. I know people are at home, and they're going to be mad at me. I'm not saying it's you, or whoever's watching, I'm not saying it's you. There are people out there that actually deserve more than the four percent.
And they're probably people that deserve.
And there's people that maybe do deserve less. I don't know who those, that's the other thing, though. I don't want anybody at home that are watching this or going to go back and talk about, I don't know who those people are. So, that's the other thing I want to say. I don't know who those people are. I don't know, maybe there's only two, maybe there's ten, I have no idea. But guess what, we could, we could know, we could know, actually. We could know and see, I don't want to see, but we could know and see that we've had that, we would have data-driven, we would have data-driven merit-based pay.
And, and, and.
That's what I would.
I'll, I'll take part of the hit for that, because.
I didn't hit him.
No, I, I, I did, after, after we discussed this last year, I spent a good deal of, of time developing the paperwork to do merit increases, to do employee evaluations. And, and I distributed that for review to the, to Eric and, and Police Chief and everybody that works under the mayor. I did not push to get that completed this year. There were so many other things that came up that it kind of got shoved to the back. So, so I'll, I'll take part of the hit for that. I, I got half the job done, but didn't get the whole job done.
Well, and here's the other thing, we do have other important things that we're doing, too, so I also know that. And I, who's to say that if we did this merit-based pay, or merit-based, you know, we did an evaluation, that maybe nothing would change? And I don't mean that in a negative way. Maybe it would show that actually people deserve more, or you see people doing more. I just think that people should, if somebody is doing more, then they should get more money. They should get more money. So, I think people thinking of it as like, I'm always being negative, I'm not, I promise I'm not. It's more based on, I know that people do good work, and I hate seeing those people not be rewarded for that good work.
Or get the same reward, somebody that gets forty percent.
Larry, what's your thoughts on that?
And, and I, I agree, you know, I mean, a person that puts forth the effort and has certain skill sets.
Yes.
Bring more to the table, so why should that person be at the same rate as a guy that just basically slips through?
But, you know, and one of the reasons I didn't push that, just, the reason I didn't push that any harder than I did is Eric is all the time turning his head around for the different things that he does, you know? The things that he's responsible for, and, and I've kind of gotten to the point where, I, not terribly bad, but I feel bad sometimes about calling Eric and saying, Eric, I need this, or I need that, or can you do this, or can you do that? Because I know how busy him and his crew is on a daily basis. And, and most people don't see it, because you're on the outside looking in, where I'm on the inside looking out, and I see just how busy these guys are.
Let's reward them based on that.
And, and, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, I spent a lot of time, that's how Purdue did theirs, okay? And, and I spent a lot of time doing employee evaluations up there, and, and your raise was based on your score at the end of the evaluation, kind of like the form that I gave out to the department heads, and I honestly, I kind of modeled it after what I did at Purdue. When you start talking about, well, the average is, let's say, four percent, some people may get two, some people may get six. Immediately, when you start mentioning that to employees, I'm a six percenter. Look at me. And, and, and they may think that, but Eric might not think that. So, so it's, it's difficult.
Yeah, that one might create, yeah, I would say that might create.
Because the guy that got two percent's not going to be very happy.
Okay, so, so, so Kaylee, what do you want to do?
Well, I mean, we're not going to do, we're not doing anything this year, but I think what we're starting to get into, and we're starting to see a problem over the last, you know, seven years I've been on the council, is that we, we just keep, and I'm, again, I want to give people money. It's not that, but we, we can't give to the extent that we've been giving, and we don't know what next year looks like, or the next year after that.
Senate Bill One, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so I understand a hundred percent.
So, so next year, they, they may not, and that was, that was one reason why I went ahead and made it four percent again this year, proposed four percent, was because next year and the year after, it may be zero.
I think, and, but I will say, I feel like last year, when we did it, too, there was another reason why we decided to give.
We gave additional.
We gave an additional money because of something else possibly coming up.
We went seven percent.
Yeah. And, and, and we, there was other money given to other salaried employees, there was more money given to them. So, the last two years.
They're pretty generous.
It was very, we've been very generous on things, we've given, even insurance, we've been generous on things. So, when next year rolls around, and we, I, again, my biggest thing is I just want it to be across the board. So, whatever we decide, even if we decide next year, maybe that's not what we do, maybe we don't do merit base. I just want people to remember that we are generous, we have given them, you know, increases every year when other people have not, and far more than other people have given. I just want to remember that, that we have done that.
Back to my point, the mayor and Joanne are up for a four percent increase, and I'm proposing we make it more. So, that's, I'm.
Oh, that's what you're talking, okay, okay.
I'm circling back around.
Okay.
I'm circling back around.
Just to address that, the budget cannot be increased beyond what we've advertised. So, if you chose to do something like that, then the funds are going to have to be pulled out of something else that's been budgeted. Because once the budget is advertised, you cannot increase it. You can decrease it, but you can't increase it.
You have to move money around.
You would have to move money around. We could take money out of his promotions to put in salary.
What about like an additional benefit form, like we care or something? Where they've got access, would that benefit you, Larry, if you had access?
Larry, there's credit.
Yeah, I'm on. I'm on social security, Medicare now.
Me, too, now.
But, you know, that's, that's like, I, I talk a lot with Brad Crane down in Covington, and Brad makes twice what I make, and gets medical and, and.
Yeah, they've always, the mayor's always got insurance through that.
Yeah, he gets insurance through the, the city, which, you know, for somebody that wasn't on Medicare. That, that'd be a pretty, pretty good deal for him. But having the We Care would be a good deal. And, and, you know, that's, that's something is, you know, we, we've talked a lot about benefits. I don't wanna get too far off track, but a, a lot of folks, uh, I don't think they realize what this We Care really means. As far as a, as a benefit to them. Uh, you know, I, I've worked for what I consider probably the best employer in Tepka New County. For all those years and we never had anything like that. I would have given anything to have what the We Care offers our employees. But I think people take that for granted. Uh, just had a discussion today, uh, regarding, uh, the, the vacation. And how you can carry, uh, one and a half times your vacation into the next year. And I don't think people really realize exactly what that means. Because before it was a use it or lose it deal at the end of the year. If you had a week's vacation and you hadn't used it yet, it was gone. So after last year, again, I, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but I kind of modeled that after what I had at Purdue. Because I thought it was a pretty good deal. You can carry one and a half times your vacation into the next year. So if I had four weeks coming and I only used two of them. I could carry two weeks of that vacation into the next year. So when, by the time you get to the point where you have four weeks vacation. And you carry, say you didn't take any of the last year you worked here. You can carry one and a half times that into the next year. You could cash that out, it's like money in the bank. For, for.
When you say one and a half times, are you talking like if you had five weeks?
Yes.
You would.
You could, you could carry one and a half times.
One and a half times five.
Yeah. Into the next year. And, and I don't know that the employees even really understand that. Uh, but I, after the conversation I had today with a couple of employees, I think they do understand that now. But I, that's a, that's a benefit that was unrealized. Now, if you're one of those people that use your vacation as soon as you get it. It doesn't probably matter to you, it doesn't help you. But when you, when you go cash out and you retire at the end of, or if you, if you have some kind of family thing. That you need to take a bunch of time off, now you've got all this vacation in the bank. That ensures that you're gonna be paid during that time. So it, it, it's, it's a benefit that I think that's kind of unrealized. That, that people don't know they even have.
I didn't realize that, I guess I did realize, I didn't realize that, that we have We Care. We Care is such a huge, that's, that's amazing.
I mean, the, you know, your drugs and, and they don't carry all the drugs up there, but you know.
They carry anything generic, basically.
Yeah.
Your lab work though, your, your medication.
Make the motion to increase their, their percentage, or what do we do?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't know where you get the money from, that's the thing.
Well, there, there's, the money won't, the money might have to be moved out of a, a couple of accounts to cover it. But then the next year it can be put into the budget, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, I'm just not sure where you would pull the money from to cover it. I mean, I, and I went through and I analyzed the budget and the general budget is up point nine four percent. So less than one percent. All of the other categories that the budget has actually decreased over last year.
I, I, I'll, I'll just say that. From my standpoint, I appreciate the gesture, but I don't really, I'm not interested in making more money. I, slightly for saying.
Like you said, we don't do it for the money.
But I'm not in this for the money. Uh, if, if you wanna increase it next year, then we could put it in the budget for next year and, and move forward. And, and I don't, I don't know what next year's budget's gonna look like either. It's a sad thing, you know, we may not give any raises next year to anybody. And, and I just don't, I, I wouldn't wanna, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but I, I, I'm not in the boat where I would. Put my hand out for more money or, you know.
But for now, you, you, you guys are getting a four percent, is that what you said? Okay.
Yeah.
So it's like.
I mean, we're all getting a four percent increase this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's essentially four percent across the board, except for the people we mentioned. Well, if nothing else, we really appreciate what you guys do. I appreciate you, I appreciate the gesture Johnny, I really do.
Wayne doesn't think it can happen this year either.
I, I appreciate you as well.
I guess that'd be something we could talk about for next year. And if we had to be in the budget that way already and it wouldn't.
What do you think Larry, fifteen percent for our Dallas? Twenty percent maybe?
Like I said, if I was doing this for the money, I'd, I'd probably still be working at Purdue. I tell you what, I'd, I'd vote for fifty percent if you guys would put the bill for pizza for as long as me.
Yeah, is there like.
Larry can use his debit card. No, personal debit card, not, not city debit card.
Larry, we have a question. Yes, I'm sorry, Sandra.
Just real quickly, you know, I worked at Attica for thirty-five years in our anonymous program. So I understand budget very well. Having said that, I wanna say that, you know, salaries, I haven't gotten into it or nothing like that. I don't know that much about it. However, merit based not only gives to the ones that excel or, or do average. But they, if you also have to have some criteria to get rid of an employee that does not meet the standard that we need. And if you don't have some kind of paper in your hand, you know, you can't just go say, I'm gonna let you go. Because you've been late every day this week or whatever.
Absolutely.
So you, it's, it's more, you're putting a positive spin on it and that's good. But there's also an obligation to the citizens to do it on a merit based. So that you can replace people that aren't doing the job.
It gives us a paper trail, yeah, it gives us a paper trail.
And I would say I agree to you, with you to an extent, but I don't agree with the evaluations. I agree that, I agree Eric should document anytime somebody screws up or does want, and then he should review that at the end of the year. Or, or while we're doing budget and decide on raises that way.
The, the good thing about an evaluation particularly, and, and this is just from my experience. If you do them twice a year, come time for raises at the end of the year, you should not be surprised. Because now, now you've been told mid-year, like in, in July, that you're, you're falling behind. So you need to make some corrections by the end of the year. And, and typically, we, like I said, we did those twice a year. So you come, come time for the raise, if you didn't get a good raise. You shouldn't have expected it because you knew what was coming due to your evaluation that you've already done.
An ordinance for this, or do we need a resolution to, to make it, to follow up on Kaylee's point? Where, um, you know, we mandate that all evaluations are performed, or all raises are performed based.
We could probably do it as a resolution. Yes, there's functionally no difference between the two, just so you know. Why, why don't I bring a, a, a copy of what, or I can send it to you.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what I came up with, and I, I think it's a pretty good document, it's pretty straightforward. It's, uh, it's fairly easy. I tried to make it as easy on these guys as I possibly could, but I could send that to you.
But, but I mean, do you, do you want it in a resolution form where everybody knows? I mean, all the city employees know.
I, I think that'd be a good idea, but why don't you review the document first and then we'll, we'll do it.
We'll table that until next year.
Yeah, that, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And, and we can talk about it again next month or obviously before the end of the year. Tim, Kimple?
Just real quick on the street department guys there. Appreciate everything they do. And compare the size of Attica, King to Covington and to Delphi. They've got half the people that other places our size have. And I know we don't have the money for it, but I think the public needs to keep that in mind. We got half the people that cities our size and I think they do a great job.
Oh, absolutely.
But I just wanted to point that out to people because, you know, just like here we have no water. Someone's worried about brush being picked up, so.
You, you wouldn't believe the calls that we got during that water outage that went to my brush going, getting picked up.
I say a picture of a river.
You have plenty of water.
Yeah, we're fine.
Just, just real quick, it's not uncommon to have the employee file, fill out their own form. And think about it this way, if you have, you know, fifty people and they fill out their forms, you only have to deal with the people that you don't agree with their forms. And that gives you a chance to, to, to deal with those people at that time. It just cuts your workload down. And if you've got fifty over half of your people that you have to address, you probably have a management issue, issue anyway.
That's a good point.
Okay, Wayne, I don't know if you saw, but Kim did make it in and, uh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Kim, did you have anything?
I do, yes, I just have a couple of things to tell you.
Sure, thank you.
Do you wanna finish up this first, uh, or?
I, I wouldn't mind letting Kim.
Then get her on her way.
Yeah, if she needs to go.
Yeah.
Um, so I just wanna give you an update about the We Care building. Um, right now the contractor's waiting on the subcontractor and he's having a hard time getting someone to do the front face of the building. There, they figured out there's a lot of issues, ivies, things that have come up that they didn't expect. So it's causing delays, so that's one issue that has come up. Um, I did send him the color scheme that he had asked for and Eric, he asked if the water, electric and gas were turned on in that building. And I don't know if Scott got ahold of you or not, but he asked me that. And do you know the, if they are?
The, the gas and electric wouldn't be the city, that would be, uh, Duke Energy at some point.
Okay, okay.
Um, if somebody set up an account, the city of Attica could.
Okay.
Could, could water the place up.
Okay, so those are just some clarifications that I needed. Um, and then I also wanted to let you know that the, the website is updated as far as new board members and things like that. All of that is on there.
Great.
Uh, we got KW Rice on there and his name's misspelled, but I sent their correction. So it'll, it'll be corrected eventually, so that's all that I have. If you have any questions, I, I've met with Larry a couple of times about getting our letters of commitment for our matching grant funds. To make sure that we have those. Um, and all of that money is accounted for and everything, so we've already met on that part. And there's other things that we're, we're working on, but that's all that I have.
Kim, Kim, when is your next, uh, director's meeting and is that available to the public?
It is, it is this Thursday and I did bring up about the public. Um, they were, they were, they were not against it completely. They wanted to discuss it further because there's other business that, that isn't open to everybody. You know, I mean, because there's business, um, deals and things that have to be private. But they were, they weren't objective, if, if somebody wanted to come to the meeting and, um, you know, to come in. If you have something that you'd like to ask them, or you like have something you wanted to address, that they were happy to oblige for that.
What time is that?
But you do have two representatives on the board, um, for Attica specifically. So you have Sharon and you also have, um, Brian on there, so representing Attica. You already have two members, so those would be your representatives that if you had questions, that you could go ask them.
Okay. What time is that?
Uh, it's five thirty Thursday.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't come back to you earlier.
That's okay, no.
I didn't realize you actually had anything for us.
Yeah, the plan changed at all, what they wanna do with the down down?
Oh, well, I mean, right now we're just trying to make sure your guys' investment is, you know, that, that we're doing. We're honoring that investment issue and, and fulfilling those requirements that were already given to us for the city of Attica. So they're just trying to get the building and, and everything. And the building has a lot more issues than they expected. So a lot of it's subcontractor issues right now that we're waiting for, so that's the delay.
Larry, what is the planned approach with our representatives and feeding information to us? Uh, because realistically, if, if Kim doesn't tell us anything, I don't know that our representative.
The council really doesn't, and, and I don't have a representative that, that, that actually is appointed by the city or the council. Uh, they're, they're kind of their own separate entity. Uh, I, I typically work through Kim, Kim's very good at, at, uh, communicating.
Well, I just wanted to clear up, she's like saying, if you've got questions, you ask your, your people. And I'm like, we're not seeing our people, so.
And we have, like she said, we have Sharon Nagle, who was here earlier at a meeting tonight. Um, and, and Brian Kraft. But those aren't, are appointees. They, they do live in Attica and they do represent the Attica area, but they are not necessarily affiliated with the city of Attica. I'll just say that.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. You can call me, my number's there, my email's there, anything that you need, anything that I have.
I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page here because.
Yes, yes.
No, and, and I can see where people would get the idea that we had representatives. And yes, we have people from Attica on there, but they're not necessarily appointees of the city of Attica. But Kim's, Kim's been really good about coming to the meetings.
That was more when we went to the county, so that when they, when we go contracted with the county. Um, they, they picked someone from every community to sit on that board. So there's someone from Kingman, there's someone from Petersburg, there's somebody from, you know, all of, and there's two from Attica. So, so everyone has a member on there and everything. And like I said, it is on the website, but you're more than welcome to call me at any time if you have any questions. And if I can answer it, I will, and if I don't know the answer, I'll find out for you as fast I can. It's, uh, we've worked. Or I'm sorry, we've worked some more.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kim.
So, so salary ordinance.
Yeah, do we need to just, do we need a survey?
We can, I, I, I don't know that we absolutely have to tonight. Do you need to leave? Thank you, I appreciate you coming, sorry it took so long. Appreciate you being here though. You still with me, Morgan? All right. Last man standing, a woman standing.
So do you, you wanna wait?
I, I, no, I don't, I don't know that we need to wait.
Four percent across.
Yeah, it's not necessarily, like I said, it's not across the board. If you look at it, if there's a few people that are not.
Yeah, you kinda thinned it out a little bit on some things we talked about, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we, do we need to vote on that?
We, we, we don't have to, it doesn't have to be passed, salary ordinance does not have to be passed tonight, we can.
You can, it just has to be passed before the end of October, so it will have to be passed at the next meeting.
We, we could do it at the next meeting or we could do it tonight, I, I don't know that.
I don't care, I don't have any folders on it.
I'd say I don't either.
I don't have it.
If, 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 that's one last piece of business we have to do next month.
Well. Do we have a document to look? Which, which, which one are we looking at here that we're?
Isn't it the one that, uh?
Did we go in and modify? I, I think that, because remember I said to you, we need to look at it, we need to take off some of the, the notation stuff. Because it wasn't needed.
We don't have, maybe we better wait until next one.
Okay, I'm good either way. I'm good either way.
Okay, so I make the motion and we'll table it until, uh, next, uh.
Okay.
Did somebody second that or? I, I just didn't know if I missed it. I wasn't asking for a second, I just didn't know if I'd missed the second. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, sewer credit ordinance update. Uh, when the state board of accounts was here and doing their audit here in the last several weeks. I think I gave it to Judd. We, they could not find an ordinance that stated about giving the, what I call sprinkling privileges through the summer. Where we estimate the sewage and, and just charge for the water across the board. Um, I actually found that ordinance and, and it was, uh, codified in nineteen ninety-nine. Currently, that ordinance is kind of across the board, if you will. Uh, you get it, I get it, whether I'm sprinkling, whether I'm not sprinkling. Uh, it's just an automatic for those three months, your sewage bill is, is what it is. It's based on your, your minimum. And then, uh, if you use a lot of water during those months, uh, you just pay for the water. That has some loopholes in it, in that if I have a leaky toilet this month. And I use a ton of water and it goes down the sewer, yay for me, I don't have to pay for that. I'm just paying for the water. So it's kind of a two edged sword. I believe, and I've not done the figures on it, I believe that the city is probably losing money on the deal, doing it across the board. As this is currently written, here's a copy I printed of the, of the ordinance, the current ordinance. If anybody cares to look at it. I, I believe that the one that, that Judd has in hand to consider tonight. Basically closes that loophole and says that you can sign up for sprinkling privileges. And this is the way it was prior to the nineteen ninety-nine ordinance, I believe.
So why would they change it, just curious?
Don't know. But, uh, I, I think that back in those days, if you were going to sprinkle, you could say, hey, I, I need to fill my pool. privileges and I, I've heard the girls tell them a hundred times that, no, you don't have to do that, everybody gets that through the summer, uh, for those three months.
So somebody remembers about it, somebody remembers about it.
So, so some of the citizens are still thinking that they need to sign up for it, um, like I said, I, I think the city's probably losing some money on sewer services that are being utilized, that aren't being paid for during that time, if you get a big leak or something, uh, but I, I guess I'm okay either way, whatever you guys think, if you would like to consider the, the updated ordinance, uh, Judd, do you have any comment on?
That's the distinction, is that it's not across the board, it's by request, by people.
That's the only thing that's gonna, that would be changing with it.
Otherwise, this jives with what you're, you currently have.
Just the change.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number two oh two five dash zero nine zero eight on summer sewer use.
Which is the new ordinance.
Yes.
Where you have to ask.
Right.
Okay. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I might abstain because I, I didn't get a chance to really read it or compare it with the other ones, so I'm just going to abstain on this one.
Okay, that's fine. So, full abstention.
Thanks.
Dwayne, do you have a copy there you can sign?
Yes. Something is popping up on there. Sorry, I have no idea what it is. Thanks.
Thank you.
Never seen that before. I have no clue. I'm glad you said something though, because I can't see it, because I'm not looking at it.
Here's the.
Somebody from the FBI wanted to have a conversation, I just didn't understand. I wasn't, I wasn't comprehending it, so I didn't have enough time to listen, it showed that I don't agree with you, or should I just?
No, and that's fine, I. Do, do you want a copy, you take, Dwayne, there's the copy.
Sure. I'm so. Well, there you go.
Okay.
There you go.
Moving on, uh, council redevelopment representative appointment, uh, is, is, I don't know, I sent an email out regarding this and uh, I don't know whether you all have people that you'd like to nominate for that, but.
I'd nomination, I'd like to nominate Jeff Crane for the position.
Okay, does anybody else?
Larry, I'd like to nominate Jimmy Pointer.
You okay with that, Jimmy?
Yeah, sure, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have a nomination? Okay, uh, I think the fairest way to do this is just a straight up vote, so, uh, all those for Jeff Crane, raise your hand, one, two, three. You can only vote, you can only vote once, folks.
Was that you, Kaylee? Oh, okay.
Jimmy Pointer. Jimmy, you vote for yourself, I hope?
I did.
I have three to Jeff Crane.
Does he want to do it?
Yes.
So you've, you've talked to him?
Yes.
Who, where?
Who does that replace?
Voorhees, right?
Scott.
Scott, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Larry, since we're on that, um, I just, I'm not going to belabor this too much, but um, this, when we, uh, when we, when Kaylee motioned the resolution for the, to confirm the organizations of various boards and commissions, okay, I went back, okay, and we did not have a document in front of us and Judd did send over um, an email to us, which I did review, um, but I took it, I took this document maybe a little more serious than everybody else did, uh, because when we actually voted on it, because what was sent over uh, in this resolution, and I'm kind of like a, a more technical writing kind of guy, and so for me to vote on something, especially a thick document like this, I I mean, it, it needs to be complete, and this is actually kind of where it's the, the common council and the mayor kind of working together, right, because these different board positions and commissions and everything, this is actually a document that's required for, on, on behalf of our organization, which is the city council and the mayor, to where all of these boards need to be cleaned up and, 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 and I, I actually had some issues with the, the actual resolution because I personally, and we didn't even get a chance to talk about it because it was voted on without us even having it, which uh, and what, what we found here was on Judd's document, actually, there were red highlighted notes.
And I put those notes in there.
Right, but they were red and highlighted. Well, no, this is what Judd gave us.
No, I, I, and I, the, the red highlighted ones are the ones I put in there.
Oh, you put them in?
I, I put those in after I reviewed it.
Okay, so it says, like, for example, this one, problem in capitalized red.
I did that.
And then it said problem right here.
And those are problems that I need to fix or we need to fix.
Well, no, wait, no, wait, I think it's we need to fix, right?
Well, depends on who the, the appointee is.
Well, no, I think it actually is the document, I think the document, we need to work together in, as a team, right?
The, the document itself is just the framework, that's all you voted on, and, and I reiterated this at the last meeting.
I, I didn't, okay.
The document is what we voted on, we didn't vote on who was on any of these spots or how they were filled or any of that, this is the framework of, this is this committee, this is a, a nominee from the council, this is a nominee from the, the mayor, this is nominee from the county, you're, you're, take the, take the names out of it.
We should have been sent a, a clean, there should have been nothing, no names on it.
And, and maybe that's.
We didn't even have the document in front of us when we voted on it, and the other thing is, the way I read it, actually, when I'm going through reading this, it's actually, we are, uh, the council and the mayor agreeing on the appointees, we're agreeing on who they are, their terms and everything, so.
I, I don't need you to agree on an appointee and you don't need me to agree on an appointee.
No, but, but the document reads differently, the document reads, the way I read it, is that we are establishing a resolution that has all of everybody, it's a reset, it's a reset on all the boards, all the positions, who appoints them, the timeframes, and actually, I had a couple of issues because I really think that, and I don't know these different Indiana codes here, but like, uh, there's, it doesn't say the term, it actually says the term for that person.
Many of these are set by state statute and I think that's what Judd cleaned up for us, was what the state statute said for who had to do the appointing on these and whether they had to be Republican or a Democrat, uh, those were the things that, that Judd cleaned up for us, the notes in red were, were from me because I, as I was reading through there, I noted that there were some discrepancies in what was required and what we actually had, and those notes were for me or us so that, to use internally, so we could clean those up, when I put problem this or problem that, and I don't necessarily want to get into those problems in a public meeting, but uh, that, that's why I put those notes on there before they went to Judd.
But it, to, to my defense, though, when we, when, when the motion was made to pass this resolution.
So, so what, what are you, what are you wanting, what are you suggesting?
Well, I want to work together as a team, is what I want to do.
Well, and, and I think we are, I, the, it, the document is what it is, it's, it's set by state statute, we don't arbitrarily decide how many people go on a board.
I, I understand.
Or arbitrarily decide who is going to be on all of these boards.
There would have been some nice things that we could have talked about, though, like each one of the boards, because there's people here that are responsible for approving this, but we don't know who's on the boards, okay, now, we did get the document to review, but it was, you know, and, and we don't know the terms, uh, and the other thing is, there were actually positions that the council had to fill, and um, really, that should have been the council.
And, and you don't have to do that before that, that's approved.
No, but, no, but the point is, we didn't know that, we didn't know that, we didn't talk about it.
I thought that's what, that's what I, that's what I said at the meeting too, that's, I clarified that and you, you were upset with all of us because we kept saying that literally, I wish, and I'm not mad at anybody, I'm just saying, I wished that they would have sent out the email that had no names in it, because that's the only thing that, no names in it at all, because that's the framework.
You're just approving the framework.
Just say.
But even then, it still needed work, okay, we, and the other thing is.
They didn't know.
But we needed to know that we needed to fill some positions, okay, the city council has, I think there's two positions, right, that need to be filled on our, our behalf, and so we should be talking about that at the same time as this document's being approved, in my opinion, uh, because otherwise, are we just flying blind and we're not going to approve the positions that we're supposed to?
Well, what we just do, what we just do tonight.
Yeah, I guess that'd be after, after the document, though, right, left, we should, if you still have open spots.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's what we did tonight, we filled one of those positions tonight.
Right, but what I'm saying is, though, I think that the council should be cognizant of the fact that we have positions we're responsible for filling, okay, and when we're passing, passing this resolution, we don't even have.
But, but that has nothing to do with filling the positions, Johnny, nothing to do with that, I, I, I said this at the last meeting several times and, and I'm saying it, but you're not hearing it.
Uh huh.
I, and I don't know how much more I can say it or how more plainly I can say it.
How I say it is, when you're asking me to approve a document that's got red on it, that says problem, it's so hard to do.
And it's a problem with the appointee, it's not a problem with the document.
It's just.
Take the appointees off and don't worry about who's on there or whether it's open or whether it's not, you're just approving the document itself as far as the framework goes.
The, so, is it, this, okay, so pursuant to Indiana code, whatever it is, for each one of these boards, is there, does that actually share the, the timeframe in that code, because I didn't have a chance to go look at each one of those.
The term.
What's that?
The term, is that?
Yeah, the term, yeah, because I think that each one of these boards, okay, should actually specify the term, four years, two years, three years, and then also, I was thinking that if, if the mayor changes, okay, does the board, what, what happens then? Does, do these boards need to be uh, re, does there need to be more in this resolution than just, than just uh, the way it's, it's written right now?
The terms are specified in most of these and where they're not specified, I looked at case law.
Okay.
Which is what you, the next source.
Okay.
Um, I didn't make up any terms uh, that were on here, so, um, and then in terms of.
Should we do that at this time, should we actually put terms to the, you know, because like, like, for example, you know, Voorhees, he uh, he resigned, right, okay, so now we have these open positions, and since we're already doing this resolution, uh, to confirm the organization of various boards and commissions, should we add that in this, in this document?
I don't know, I mean, to get that, get too into this dispute about the form of it versus the names on it, which you're kind of, you're asking about Voorhees's replacement and I don't think anybody's talking about the name that goes in that blank.
Right.
We're talking about the term.
Well, and also talking about the action when he resigned, okay?
But, but to, for him to resign, say he resigned in year one of a four year term, so there's three years left on that term.
Okay.
That's the form.
So that's how that would, that's how that would read then?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, because see, I didn't know, because that's what we haven't defined, is that if somebody resigns and there's three years left, does it reset and now there's four years once that person's appointed?
So, so the, the whole.
I didn't know that.
Kind of an underlying theme of, of that, of, of the different boards is that you don't, that you stagger the terms so that you don't lose everybody in one year and have brain drain, that, so nobody knows what the heck's going on the following year when we've got all new members, so those terms have been staggered out.
It's kind of like what we did with the council.
A lot of them track the term of the mayor, no doubt, because those are mayor, a lot of the mayor appointee things track the term of the mayor to address what you're just talking about.
Yeah, that was another thing that I was interested in.
But, but, but there, these are set up to be staggered, and, and do, do I think you can flip back to prior minutes of meetings and make this one hundred percent right? I didn't try and I don't know if those minutes exist, for the most part, these are from past appointments, where they're not, the only thing that was done for any of them was to try and stagger the terms so there wasn't a brain drain on the board, that was the only, if there was liberty taken, that would be it, and I can't think of an example of that, but I did this for a bunch of other towns and for Warren County, same, Ingrid and I both did these same format, and that was the, what you're trying to do is to set it up so that there's some continuity in how the board operates term wise.
Well, and, and for, for myself, since I'm a first year, and I don't know, because I haven't been here seven years like Kaylee has, um, she knows who's on the boards and who's not, okay, I don't, and I don't know what their terms are, I don't know any of it, and so for me, um, I, I would have liked to have been able to go through it and actually talk a little bit about it, I mean, my gosh, we spent an hour and a half on cats and we can't talk, you know, ten minutes on an important resolution like this, so, I mean.
Some of them are crystal clear in the statute and some of them will just say a four year term, for instance, but like crisp, by crystal clear, I mean, like the Economic Development Commission literally says, this appointee by this organization will start in February and this appointee will have a two year term, a three year term and a four year term, and that's to create that staggering, and then after that, there will be four year terms going forward to keep the stagger going, so, I don't, that, that's the for, the form of this document is what was important to the drafter, uh, to try and, and give you the blanks to fill in, you guys, how you fill them in is how you fill them in, and when somebody resigns, you know where to go, but they would then fill the unexpired term of that person when they get appointed.
I didn't, I didn't know that, okay.
To keep that staggering, I mean, that's the overarching goal, is to keep some continuity on the boards, because some are set up, like Benton County's Plan Commission was set up where they lost like seventy-five percent of the people in one year, and it was devastating to the, because one of the remaining members didn't really attend that often, so virtually that was non-existent, and now we're down to two people who know what really is going on.
So you're running the ship.
So, well, or you're trying to bring everybody up to speed and it's like, well, this is what we were talking about at the last meeting before we lost six people and it's difficult.
It'd be really hard.
It's difficult, I mean, it's just like starting over, I mean, it's just like, we should start, we should bring people back to the hearings and redo the hearings and redo all the different things that were presented the last couple of months and just do it over again, so everybody knows what the heck's going on.
But we, but we did, just so that we're, it's clear, we did see this before the last meeting, we, we got an email in July.
Yeah, July fifteenth, right?
Yes, yes.
That's, that's it, right here, because I, I sent it to.
Yes.
And so that was the document we were working from, was an unfinished document.
Yes.
And that we did not have in front of us when we voted, where, when, when there was a motion made, and so that's my problem, I just, and, and Kayla, I'll tell you, I'll tell all the council members, if we don't have a complete document and, uh, we don't have the document in front of us, then we have no business voting on it or making a motion.
I guess I, I guess I completely under, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, you shouldn't vote on it, I, this is like my lifeline to all the things, I just constantly, so like, right now, I just was looking it up because I didn't have, I don't have it printed out, so I'm like, okay, I know I have that saved, I have it in my file, I'm going to go find it, so I've got it, I just.
I guess, my thing is, maybe it might have been clear for me, being new, if that position hadn't been filled, maybe that blanks, maybe should have just said vacant, I don't know, that might have helped me a little bit, but I'm fine with it.
Well, I, I think that we just have to have some conversation as the council and the mayor, uh, on this, because it's actually a joint effort and we should be working together as a team to fill these positions and make sure they're filled, and, uh, you know, uh, and so I, I'd like to see the council be a little bit more proactive on our positions that we're responsible for filling and, uh, not have to have Larry say, hey, by the way, you guys aren't doing your job, you know, it's like, I mean, because that's how I feel it, I feel like he's saying, okay, he's kind of bringing it to us and, and saying this, and, and so, in, in this document, it's important that we go through as the council and understand, you know, what our positions are to fill, um, I just, because we had open positions and we, we really don't need Larry to bring it, bring it to our attention, we should bring it to, uh, each other's attention, I think, so.
No, I just, like tonight, I just want to get it on the agenda.
Well, and I appreciate you doing that, but I'm just trying to bring it out.
I wanted you guys to know that I had it on the agenda and, and to be thinking about it.
And, and that goes into one, and I'm going to burn up my time, okay, Larry?
You already did.
The other thing too, I'd like to say is that, you know, uh, Councilman Moss, you're the president of the, the council, and, um, I know that I've, I've been seeing you. And, and so in this document, it's important that we go through as the council and understand, you know, what our positions are to fill. I just, because we had open positions. And we, we really don't need Larry to bring it, bring it to our attention. We should bring it to each other's attention, I think.
No, I just, like tonight, I just want to get it on the agenda.
Well, and I appreciate you doing it, but I'm just going to bring it out.
Know that I had it on the agenda. And, and to be thinking about it.
And, and that goes into one, and I'm going to burn up my time, okay, Larry?
You already did.
The other thing, too, I'd like to say is that, you know, Councilman Moss, you're the president of the, the council. And I know that I've, I've been seeing you being required to burn up your free time to go sign up, sign on things and, and be a part of different things. I think that some of them we get invited to, but knowing you're there, it's, it's going to be taken care of. But it would be good if you could just get back with us or let us know maybe on, on some of these things that take place. Because sometimes they're just out of sight, out of mind.
Sure.
Just give us an update, you know?
I'll tell you the same as I'm sure anybody else at this table will tell you, Johnny. If you have questions, ask them.
Okay.
We're not mind readers. We're, if you have a question or concern, voice it. But if you don't like the answer, then that doesn't mean to ask it a different way. It's the answer, you know? If it's a biscuit or a cookie, it's still the same thing. So.
Okay, well, I can ask pointy questions, but if I don't know you have these meetings, then it's hard to ask a question. So, but, but I do know that there was a state audit, the, the state audit came in and that you were required to be there. And so could, could I just ask you how that turned out?
Can't be discussed.
Can't be discussed.
Oh, oh, it can't.
Not yet, not yet.
They can't, it can't be discussed publicly until the findings are made public. Which they said would be a couple of weeks.
I think that was, they sent us that in an email, too.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying it wasn't bad. Okay, compared to what we've had in the past, it wasn't bad.
And it can be, I mean, we can, you know, hand out informations about the entire audit at the next meeting. They just said that everything that we received, it's a confidential and that we will not ever discuss it publicly until after the findings, you know, the report was made public.
And we were invited to come. We were invited. I, I could have been there, but I was out of town, so.
You still couldn't have discussed it, though.
Yeah, okay, well, so, but, so I would just like to ask that if, you know, you're pretty good things, and I know that we had another thing when we got, I never did hear the, the outcome, you know, from that meeting. And so I had to go make phone calls and stuff to try to figure out what happened. And so, and my, when you're invited as the president of the council, you're our representative, right? So, so I'm just asking if you could keep us in line, you know?
Like I said, you have questions, ask.
Again, if I didn't know where you're going, though, you know? So that's, so.
I'll make sure to check in with you everywhere I go. I'm going home after this.
Well, I mean, you are the president. You are the president of the council, right? So you're the captain of the team.
Yeah. Let's do a quick roundtable. Dwayne, do you have anything?
I do not.
I'm, I'm almost afraid to ask. I'm okay.
I'm good, sir.
I'm good.
Kaylee?
I have a small one, but it's not necessarily for me. Lexi would like to know if the Christmas, did you already talk about this or no, Cindy? Christmas parade? You already requested the, the.
Oh, I don't know that she did ask.
Okay, no, okay, she asked me to ask. She would, on December fourth is our Christmas parade. We would like to see if we can close the road from Jackson to Ferry from about four P M. until after the parade. Correct? Did I say that right?
We don't know people's parking and kids running out the street.
Yes.
And with the parade going through.
That's essentially downtown.
It's parrot.
It's, yeah, yes. Yeah. Yeah, we just wanted to make, yeah. So I just wanted to, I don't know if that's something you decide. I don't know if we all decide that, if that's okay.
Everybody okay with it?
Yes.
It's just for a few hours.
Yeah, I just need to make sure Garrett knows what's going on.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, he will.
Thank you. You guys are on top of it. Oh, wait, Cindy's got one more thing. Yes.
Cindy, names that I'm reporting from Main Street. This is just reminders that duck race.
Yes.
Is September the twentieth. Paul Rosen's going to Attica Main Street, which helps them get all the insurance and all the expenses for part of the lights downtown that we do, the parade, the dance industries, all, all of that stuff. Five dollars a duck, six quack are only twenty-five.
Six quack.
I want a six quack.
I bought my six quack on Saturday.
You might, if you buy it off Lexi, you might get a little, little, a really cute little duck.
And you can purchase from Lexi or me or Paul.
Might make a motion.
Oh, technically.
I door dashed some pizza for everybody. We'll be here in about.
I'll, I'll stay here. I'll stay here.
Morgan, you got anything else before we get out of here?
I don't think so.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, it's so cute.
I made a motion, we adjourned.
I'm, okay. Look at that.